Thanks, everybody for coming tonight. This is the legislation in the committee of the whole meeting. Today's July 6, 2022. I'm gonna start from the bottom, from what's in legislation. It's regarding the discontinuance of Cartn Ave., Cornelia Street, and Lafayette Street. And I know we put in the committee with some concerns by myself and maybe other council members. You know, where they're gonna be cutting off the streets, and what's gonna take place around the hospital. So, tonight, in the audience, we have Mr. Schofield, which I would like him to come forward and set up the table here. And if anybody has any questions, or I would like him to give us a little bit of a briefing on what's gonna take place and why. And hopefully, you know, we could bring this out this evening and vote on it. So, right now, I'm just gonna give you the floor and just give us a little briefing. If you did speak with the fire department, police department, and the logistics of how this is all gonna come together, the campus, as well as, I think, the original map was to have a helicopter landing pad on the ground, and now it may be, I think, on a roof or...
Sure. I can make it just solid. You guys sit here so I can look at people.
Yeah, that's fine.
Except I have my back to you. If you don't mind.
No problem.
Hi, everyone. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm Bob Schofield, and I think I've met most of you. So, the purpose of today's legislation is a follow-up to the planning board meeting that happened a long time ago, 2019. There were a number of streets that had to be vacated as a result of the building of the Wynn Hospital. We chose not to include the three portions in tonight's legislation, primarily because they're underneath the parking garage, and we needed to acquire all the properties, and the county needed to have a plan for building the garage. Now that they do, we're asking for the vacation. So, it is Lafayette Street from Broadway to State, Cornelia Street from Lafayette to Riskenee, then the entire Cartn Ave., from State Street, as you know, curls around and comes to Lafayette Street. So, those are the three streets and the space in question. We have met with Chief Williams. We also have met with Chief Ingersoll from the fire department. They're aware of not only these plans, but they've been very much involved in the hospital building project. Police chief's been on-site a number of times. He's walked the location, the perimeter, as well as inside. The fire department does regular drills. It has their team through the building regularly, so in the event of an emergency now during construction, they're prepared, but also planning for how they would address an emergency after the building is complete. The fire department and police department were involved earlier on in the planning, so the location of hose connections, so on and so forth, were all reviewed and approved by the fire department back in 2018, 19. We are at about seventy-five percent complete with the construction of the building. The outside is essentially complete. A few things need to occur. Some windows need to go in still on the north side and the east side. That hasn't happened yet, so we still use those open spaces to bring material into the building. There's a lot of material. If you drove by today, you would have seen hundreds of pieces of duck work going in the side of the building. So, there's a mad rush to get that all done, so they can close up those building, the exterior of the building here this summer. The inside, we worked from the west end of the building, east, on the first and second floor. So, we actually have rooms that are done, where the floors are in, the ceilings are in, the walls are painted and completed. And in other areas, the drywall is up and painted, but not all the flooring and whatnot. But it's going in a systematic process. So, we've, we're still on target for a substantial completion date of August of next year, 2023, and our move-in date is planned for October of 2023. The reason the distance between the two is the building has to be substantially complete, therefore, it will allow the city into the building to give a certificate of occupancy, but also the state of New York Health Department has to come through, walk the building, as do representatives from Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. They have to give the building a thumbs up before we open it, to make sure that it's appropriate and safe for patient care. So, our plan, God willing, is October. And the only reason I put it that way, you know, COVID has not been a friend to this project. There's been some supply shortage issues. Right now, we have them under control, but you don't know. One example is the emergency generators. There are two of them in the building. They were supposed to arrive December of 2021. They were pushed off to December 2022, and now we're told it's gonna be January of '23. And the issue is the brains, if you will, of the generators have a chip in them, and that chip requires, it tells them how to function appropriately. And Cummins, the company that's making the generators, will not install the brains into the generator until they can do it at their location and test it. So, they're giving us assurances. We have a date of January 26, which is plenty of time before we open, but that's just one of those kind of little details. You need to have an emergency generator before you can open up a new hospital.
You're hoping they're gonna be on time, still.
Right. And there's been some labor issues in terms of shortages. Electricians are really hard to come by right now. We do have a project labor agreement with this project, and we go to local union halls first for labor. They're tapped out, so we do have some labor coming in from downtown, but there just isn't enough. So, those are probably the two big worrisome issues right now. Oh, the helipad question. So, we never presented a helipad to the planning board. We had a picture that gave a suggestion where it should be, but the end result is it will be on top of the parking garage. So, the parking garage is five levels with a helipad at the top of it. The helipad will be its own self-contained helipad, so it's not in the middle of a bunch of cars. So, it can, we don't have to worry about someone driving on top of the helipad in parking. You couldn't get a car up there. And the helipad will have two elevators that will service the helipad, bring patients down to the first level and over to the hospital. Two elevators is a code requirement. In order, if one goes down, you have the ability of a second one. Just a reminder, we do about forty helicopter transports a year, and the majority of those are babies leaving MVHS OB and going to Cross in Syracuse, but we will have that and be prepared.
Yeah. Now, you anticipate the garage being finished, as well as the same date as the hospital?
It's gonna be really close.
Yeah. So, you may not have that access to helicopter right away until...
So, if by chance the helipad is not ready, nor is the garage not ready, we have developed a pencil document at this point for alternate parking plan that will, in order for us to open up in October '23. Our helipad at St. Luke's, which is a ground pad, can still be utilized right up until we shut down that campus. So, we need to, we can use it after.
I had a family member two weeks ago get airlifted from there.
Oh, really? Oh, they weren't a baby either, were they?
No.
So, he proves me wrong. But that is the majority of babies that are going. But, well, we do have cardiac patients that need to go to Buffalo. We've had patients go off to Cleveland Clinic.
West Justin, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How long is the parking garage estimated to take to be built?
Because we're now just taking down properties, they have not given us a completion date. We're into, we've asked for it to be completed in October of 2023. They haven't confirmed that or denied that at this point. We do meet with them every two weeks in time to try to make sure that we have clarity on that topic. So, obviously, that's a big issue for us.
Any council members have any other questions for Mr. Schofield?
I do, but I just wanna make sure everybody's done with their questions about, about the streets, about the hospital itself, because I have a question off-topic. So, I just, as long as I have you here, I can't not ask you about St. Elizabeth's. I'm the South Utica representative, and it's high on the minds of many, many of my constituents about your plans for that space. I know that the Utica Housing Study, which has only just been released, and I think, in fact, is not yet in its final, final draft. They're still finishing it up, but they have, they had some really interesting suggestions for the footprint of St. Elizabeth's, which involves, for one thing, demolishing the old hospital. It's, it would be too expensive to rehabilitate and remediate it, given the age of the building, et cetera. So, I just, I think I would be remiss in my responsibility to my constituents if I didn't press you on the question of what's going to happen at St. East, because the people in South Utica really want to know.
I would expect you to ask that question. So, Don McCain, who is a neighbor of St. Elizabeth, who I've known for a number of years, he and I are in regular communication. So, a little backtrack. January of 2020, we sent out an RFP to a number of developers for the repurposing of both the St. Elizabeth and St. Luke's campuses, because we have to repurpose both of them. And then, three weeks later, the pandemic occurred, and only one person responded to the RFP. That company did subsequently make a proposal for the use of that space. It included multi-generational housing. That plan was shared with the city at this point, and it has not gone anywhere as of yet. The folks that did the city plan that you made reference to, I didn't meet them. I apologize. I don't remember the man's name, but they came to town, walked through St. Elizabeth, and I showed them the space and then sent them the RFP. We resent the RFP out April of this year, assuming that maybe now that the pandemic was over with, and it would be, maybe a different sense of interest in developing to forty-seven different contractors throughout the state. I got the list from Long Valley Edge. It's the same list they use when they solicit contractors for projects. And surprisingly, not a single response. We had one declination respond, and there was no one else responding. So, at this point, I am working, or MVHS is working, with Envy Edge to put together a, some type of proposed plan for that location, so we have a little more detail to send out to future potential developers. But we would be happy to, as I mentioned earlier, we'd be happy to meet with anyone from the city or that developer about what the could be done at that location.
I think that one of the things that it seems to me has to be considered is that if it takes us a while to find the right developer who's going to reutilize that space, that that doesn't mean we have to wait on the demolition of the old St. East. And so, maybe we have to consider the possibility that we, whoever that "we" might be, goes ahead and makes a commitment to the demolition of the old building and turn it into a simple green space, an empty palette, an empty canvas is the better metaphor, an empty canvas, ready to be, ready to be repurposed when the right developer is ready to make that commitment. So...
I just wanna add that not everyone may not agree with the demolition of the entire campus. One of the folks that we did take through a couple of years ago thought that the original front portion of St. Elizabeth would be able to be utilized for housing, whereas additions at the back of it would come off, and then the parking garage more than likely would be removed.
Is that considered a historical building?
I'm not sure that it is, but that obviously is something that would have to be.
Yeah.
How old is that front facade part of the building?
Nineteen fourteen.
Fourteen.
Right.
Okay.
I wasn't there then, but...
Mr. Beatrice?
Yes. Hi, Bob. Nice to see you. Two things. So, is this College of Nursing plan, do you plan on keeping that campus there still?
The College of Nursing is not expected to relocate. It's gonna stay in the building at 2211, I think is the address, Genesee Street, as well all the other services that we have in that building. The St. Elizabeth Corporation doesn't go away. St. Elizabeth Hospital surrenders its operating certificate to the state of New York, but we will have some services that will be run out of that building. So, the College of Nursing will be there, as will our business offices.
Marion Medical there?
Marion Medical, everything that's in there will relocate.
Will relocate. How about, now, is there any, I've heard discussion that I actually thought it was a nice idea, the veterans? Is there ever any talk of a veterans hospital?
Well, you must be talking at St. Anne that tells everyone about that. Well, there has been no discussion?
I mean, has there ever been discussion, or that's not really?
There hasn't been. There's a significant rumor out there that the veterans had approached us about putting something into St. East campus. They have not.
Let me ask you this. Have you guys ever approached the veterans and asked them about that? Because I think that would be a pretty good idea.
We didn't approach the veterans. We approached a official from the federal government related to that, and they felt that adding another veterans' location here in proximity to Syracuse in the outpatient clinic they have in Rome, they didn't see that that would be feasible. But I didn't speak to anyone to Department of Veteran Affairs directly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. During the SEACER meeting way back when, the parking garage wasn't a part of that, was it?
Yes, it was.
So, it was a part of that, just for the public comment?
I'm sorry.
Was that during the public comment period? Is that where it was?
Yep. And there were a lot of questions concerning the parking garage. The biggest issue with the parking garage, first of all, it also, the parking garage was taken into consideration for all the environmental impacts, noise, lighting, construction period, so on and so forth. But the one that we spent the most time on was related to traffic and the volume of cars that would be coming to campus as opposed to the number of cars that are currently in that neighborhood. So, the parking study's been done three times. Twice during the SEACER process, then when the SEACER was over with, some additional questions came up, and time had passed. So, we repeated it, and then the city, or excuse me, the county repeated it prior to its construction. Okay?
Are we good, council? Okay. I expect maybe to take this out of committee tonight, audience two, four, and six. Mr. Schofield?
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your briefing. Thank you.
Frank, just to be clear, those can't be voted on until the August 3 meeting?
August 3, okay.
Just for public, it's for, that you need to hold a public hearing.
So, we need to pass it?
Nope. The resolutions were called, the public hearing was called for at the last...
But for the August 3 meeting?
Third, that's correct.
So, that will be the end of the conversation about this item at tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And in subsequent meetings as well?
It should be, yes.
So, my only reason for asking is whether I should stay or go. Not that I don't like to listen to the rest of the stuff, but...
No, you're okay.
Frank, I think we can dismiss it?
Yes.
I don't want to be a matter for, I'm Bob Schofield.
Stephanie. I'm also part of the corporation council.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schofield.
And always, as is the case, and I've said it before, any of you have question, any of the members of the common council have questions or concerns about the project, feel free to reach out. It's in your district, so I'd like to have that opportunity to talk about more things. We could certainly do so. Celeste, I know that St. Elizabeth's in your area, so if you have questions about that, I always make myself available.
Can I just go ahead and ask a really quick question? This is about the parking garage design, but is that up to you, or is that really just on the county?
It was done together.
Okay.
So, we needed to make sure that the parking garage, not the needs of the hospital, but they hired the architectural firm and designers, but I sat through all the meetings.
I would like it, I'm sure it's not too late in terms of the design, Mike's gonna love to hear me say this. I wanna, I would like you to consider putting a green wall on all, on all appropriate sides of that hospital. Do you know what I mean by a green wall? A living green plant wall?
Unlikely. It's unlikely, since it's already been designed and contracted out. I don't say that to be sarcastic or facetious to you, but...
I believe that it's not a difficult thing to add after the fact. You could put a green wall on a twenty-year-old garage if you wanted to.
I will pass that message along to the county executive minister staff. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
All right. Up next, we have five pieces of legislation. We're gonna give Celeste a hard hat, and she's gonna go to work. Next, left in the committee of the whole is five pieces. I mean, you have it in front of you. Anybody wanna discuss any of those pieces that are in front of us as we speak?
I'd like to, I'd like to bring out the vacant building registry tonight. We've, we've met with Sam Wells from Albany. The mayor went with Sam Wells from Albany. I'm gonna, I would like to make a couple of tiny amendments, one of which is that I would like the biannual report to go not just to the mayor and the common council, but also to the chief of the fire department. I've heard that six out of ten of the last fires have been in vacant buildings, so I think that this information's really relevant to the fire chief. Mr. DeBryan, though, you had brought that up yourself, that one of the advantages of a registry like this could be better keeping track of what our vacant buildings are. So, I have a couple of very minor amendments to make, and then I would like to bring this to a vote, for a vote tonight.
Sure. I just, I have a few questions. What is the consequences if they don't pay these fines?
It's like, it's like any other code in the sense, in a sense, right?
It's not, because there is consequences, and that does follow state rules, which once again didn't go upon discovery, which we're finding out now. So, I guess, I mean, I'm not saying that I don't, I don't disagree with the legislation, but I guess, for example, if you're gonna tell somebody for the third year that they're gonna pay $3,000, and they're gonna say, you know what, we're not paying you, what is the consequence to them not paying it?
Right.
Do you get what I'm saying? So, I mean, at least if there was something in there, such as...
I do. We, we looked into abatement, but, and not even, not even the abatement component of it. I guess, like, so to speak, like,
there's gotta be some type of consequences to the fines. Like, I, I, I wanna see something like this go, because I think it really does coincide with the legislation of the designated posting and so on and so forth.
Yeah, right.
I think that we were all trying to accomplish, which I don't care what legislation obviously gets passed. It's not the point. I guess I just wanna see what the, what the, what the consequence is, because to me, just passing this legislation without any consequences is really gonna kind of keep us in the same boat and then kind of put this council in the, I guess, in the, in the middle of, well, you said that, you know, they'll be registered, we can go after them, we can abate them, and then here we are, and we can't do anything really with it. So, I guess it's, I guess it would be, my question is, I mean, obviously, any, any ordinance that has, you know, that goes to the city court and so on and so forth, or through the codes department, they have to, they have to pass it, I guess. I just, I would really like to see if there's a possibility that we could add a consequence, because I do believe that these vacant properties are a serious problem, and I know Tolga and all them, they, they understand it well. You know, when we, when we put together the, what was it, the ghost, the ghost houses?
Zombie.
The zombie houses, zombie houses. You know, so I guess that would be my only hesitation to passing this. To, well, I mean, obviously, if you have the support, that's fine, but I would really like to see if there's some way that we can add, maybe putting it on to their tax bill, or, you know, maybe even, you know, trying to hold the banks responsible, or whoever, whoever that may be. I would like to see kind of like a, you know, an action to them not doing that.
I love that.
Because these fines are pretty high, and that's, and that's what I think, you know... Because these fines are pretty high, and that's, and that's what I think, you know, that's what I think that our biggest problem is, and I mean, I understand, like, the third year, yeah, three thousand dollars for non-residential, and that's, and that's fine, like, those, those, the property owners that live next door to these houses have to deal with more of a consequence than they do with fines.
Right.
So I guess, maybe.
I did pursue the idea of putting it directly on taxes, I would have loved that. And that, what I was told by corporation council was that that was not possible. So they would, so corporation council wouldn't support that. If you've got an idea of how to bring consequences, I'd love to in the future, like, let's amend it if we can think of the good consequences.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to set ourselves up for failure on this, and I say that, like, seriously, because when somebody comes up to you and they say, well, how come that person didn't pay a fine? Like, what if, what if one person does pay a fine for three thousand dollars, right? And then another person doesn't pay the fine for three thousand dollars, and they find out. So who's going to be responsible? Because we didn't, there's no way to pursue that person paying that three thousand dollars. It kind of leaves the people that are following the law, you know, in good faith of what the law says, but if somebody doesn't do it, then, you know, they're kind of like, well, why don't I get my, my money back?
But isn't that true for any of our codes?
But it, but it is, because there's consequences to the codes, and that's what I say.
No, but lots of people get away without following our codes if we don't punish them.
Sometimes, sometimes, I mean, that's, that's up to our codes department and our city courts that don't follow through on them, but they should, they should. And that's, I guess, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I understand that there's other, there's other things that do happen inside the city that people aren't responsible for, but I just wish that there's, there's, there's something that maybe we can look into to maybe see if other municipalities are able to fine them and go after them, so to speak.
Why don't we, why don't we, my suggestion would be, I mean, it's been on here from, since February, maybe you wanted to amend it, let's, let's, let's pass it, and then maybe we could amend it again and add some sort of a fine, or how to put a lien on this property, or something that we can do as, as a city to.
I mean, obviously, if we could think of a way down the road to make it even more effective, I would want us to amend the law if we, you know, let's, as Frank says.
Yeah, but they do, they could fine them, that's state law.
Frank?
I mean, they're just, they're just saying.
We don't know if they're going to comply or not comply, because we haven't even established the law.
Albany has a twenty-five percent compliance rate, and it went up over time. So Albany found that they did have people complying with this law. Not a hundred percent compliance, like, any other code that we have on our books, but they did get a compliance, and they got their compliance to grow over time.
I guess I just want to, oh, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry. No, I was, I was just saying that I don't want to put something on the code that we, that we can't.
Enforce.
Enforce, or go, or go after people with, so, I mean, if that's the case, and maybe we find out that there's something that we can't do, I mean, I wouldn't want to pass a piece of legislation that I couldn't enforce without, with fines in it. Like, I'd rather just have like a vacant registry where you can just, okay, here you go, register the vacant building, if that's the case, without the fines, I think you would have more compliance with that, because I think that our goal is to try and find out who are the owners to these, to these properties. Does that make sense? Judge, you got any, any suggestions, I mean, anything that you've, you've researched, anything along those lines?
Mr. Giorgio and I anticipated there would be this question. And councilwoman friend asked about adding it to the tax base, you know, when you don't pay something, but those are abatements, the only thing going on to the tax has to be an abatement, because an abatement's different, you've done something for a homeowner, they owe you the money. So therefore, certain things we put on the tax bill. This is not the same thing. There's two problems with this. First of all, you can't add a fine on top of a fine, you know, you've got a license, they pay it or they don't pay it, and there's a pursuit. One thing that follows the property always is a judgment. You can't sell that property if it's got a judgment on it, because any buyer would want the judgment paid before he would buy a property, because the judgment doesn't get erased that way. But again, you have to, the two things that you have to realize, and Mr. Giorgio and I actually were speaking with the mayor about this, remember that, Mr. George, quite a while ago? And of course, the other problem that arises is that, you know, you're a small city, you have just so many employees, and can do just so much. You don't have a huge corporation council's office that can have a special unit for this, a special unit for that. As soon as you don't pay at the end of the period that you're supposed to pay, there's an automatic action taken, a judgment taken. And we know that right now this court system couldn't have been any slower than it's been, and I don't think, I don't see much improvement. So that's another avenue. I think there was a call on Albany, and Albany said that if they have it, it works to about twenty-five percent, thirty percent. But Albany says the same thing Utica was alluding to. Where do you get the people who catalog the properties? The properties that have this burden on them, and the people who own them? Who does all that? Now, if you talk to the city clerk, they're doing so many other things. You just add one more thing to their burden, and they can't do it. I think there's a lot of laws that are on the books that are there in hopes that they would be complied with. But in reality, you cannot enforce every single item that's in that book. It's this, that, and there are many things in there that if people are supposed to do, that don't do. We can't cut everybody's grass and then have an abatement. We can't do all the things we would like to do. And so it, it really comes down to a matter of practicality. Mr. Giorgio and I thought about penalty. I mean, it came into our minds, but how can you add a penalty on to what is a penalty to begin with? If you can't enforce the first one, how are you going to enforce the second one? But if you get a notice, and this is something you face as a property owner, it may have some effect on enough people to make it worthwhile. But is it worthwhile to try to enforce it in gross? I would say probably not. So I would like, and the only reason I'm saying all of this is that we brought this up to Ms. Friend. Her idea has a lot of merit. We know what the shortfalls are, and I want you to know, Mr. Giorgio and I, working together, we talk about all these things. And the reason we didn't put anything in there, it's just like when you're chasing your own tail. I didn't want to put something in there that I know is not going to happen. That corporation council's office has, I think, one person goes down to city court, what do you have, Mr. Giorgio? How many, one person? One person goes down, do you know how many things in Utica have to be enforced in city court? One person. You don't have a large office there. And who's going to take care of saying, this came due? Who registering all these properties? Who knows all the properties that really this law applies to? I'm sure Mr. Mahoney has a lot of extra people in his office who could take care of that, couldn't you?
My department doesn't have any teeth, though.
Well, you know, I, I don't like to be.
I get charged all day long.
I don't like to be facetious, I really don't. But I think that when people come before you, they should tell you what is truthful, not, not try to make you happy, saying that you can do something you can't do. If I thought of something, and if Mr. Giorgio suggested something, and we both agreed we would try it and put it there, we would have, we didn't. And there was a reason why we did, and because a councilwoman, Tester, brought it up, now we get an opportunity to tell you why we didn't do it. So you got the law, whatever Albany's doing, you're trying to do with the staff you've got. But don't expect that you're going to have a hundred percent compliance, because that would be.
I still have one more question, please.
I would never say that's going to happen.
The only, the only other question that I have, and I'm not sure if this legislation's going to come out tonight, but we, we, you also have to add in there who's collecting the fines. So like, for example, who, whoever they're registering it, those, those people that are registering are going to be paying those fines, right? So like, say, for example, they register them, they register them in the codes department. Is the codes department now going to be responsible for those fines to collect those fees? Or is it going to be set up through the comptroller's office? If they're registering with, say, the city clerk's office, is the city clerk's office going to be responsible for handling those, those fines that are put in? So I just think that that also needs to be clarified, I mean, especially to the tune of, you know, two or three thousand dollars, for example, I wouldn't feel comfortable with the city clerk's office collecting that on a, on a payment right then and there. So maybe adding it in there that the comptroller's office could set up a separate fund to collect those fines if that was going to be passed. So that, that has to be also added in there, because you don't want to know who's not going to be responsible for collecting those, those fines.
Okay. President Galini wants to say.
Hi, I'm sorry, I had to drive down from camping.
You made it?
Yeah.
You obeyed the speed limit, you're okay.
Yeah, no, it's all good. Well, this wasn't necessarily on the agenda for the way this, tonight's meeting was called, but I, I did want to say a couple of things on this, since it obviously came up. The first thing is Tolga Morovsky, the executive director of Mohawk Bailey Land Bank. When this initially was put in, I know many other people had conversations with him as well, on how this, this may or may not function, but he expressed interest in wanting to come and talk to the council if we were to call a meeting specifically on this, at one of our committee of the whole meetings, to talk about how it was implemented in his town, and which definition of vacant it was implemented upon, because he did feel that our definition of vacant, while this is modeled after the Albany law, may be quite broad. And he wanted to just talk to us, especially because they have worked within the city with properties, rehabilitating properties, and that's the purpose of the land bank, is to deal with zombie properties, similar situations, to really have a conversation with the council, to spur a conversation of what types of properties we're going after, so that if the council did want to move on something like this, it could be tailored to the issue and not catch many other broad people in the crossfire of this, similar to the situation we had with Ridgewood Market with the convenience store legislation. We levy a fee on someone who's great for the neighborhood, he ended up very aggravated with that. And he's not the person we were going after with that, right? The second thing is the term vacant. If we do pass this, we're basically saying any building in which no occupant lawfully resides or no tenant is in lawful possession. I'd be inclined to ask corporation council, just for my own, you know, potential use in the future, if I had purchased a building, and I was doing something private within that building, what would lawful occupancy be?
I could just say there's, and I think Judge Garmont and I had also spoken about this, there's some problems with the term and having to, we would have to prove essentially whether or not a building was vacant, and that's a very hard, based on that.
But you can't come into my building and say that.
Yeah, so there's, yeah.
Yeah, right, so.
There's a lot of problems with what is vacant, based on the definition, and how we would prove that to be able to get a fine.
Well, because here's, yeah, and then basically, the third thing I wanted to say about this is, if I had a building, I would fully expect the city, even if they did not know what I was doing inside that building, whether it was vacant or not, to enforce all of the codes violations that I may or may not have, right? And we have plenty of that going on right now, and there's no reason we couldn't rein in those codes violations now, to the extent of our employment, how many people are working for us? And that's what the judge was basically getting at, is we're already behind on reining people in. But that's, that's what I was most concerned with, is if I purchased a building, and I wanted to keep it for private use, whether I was building sculptures in it, whatever, making shoes, and I don't want to tell anyone, you can't come in. So that, that's going to be really difficult, if we do pass this. Now, I will say, we do have a lot of codes violations, a lot of problems, you know? I, I think we should, we should, if you want to firm that up, go ahead, but trying to deem vacant buildings an extra expense and then having to prove that might be very difficult, so. But, but to go back to the Tolga Morovsky thing, if you guys are going to move on this, he really did want to come to speak to the council on that. And I know he's spoken to the council a bunch of different times, and I know you speak to, you're on the board.
Tolga was on my front porch last week, I told him I was going to bring this out of committee, he said nothing to that effect.
Okay, well, don't.
I see Tolga all the time, and he's never once, this is the first time I've heard that he wanted to come to the council and discuss.
Do you want me to call him and put him on speaker? Okay. Did you request the floor from the chair?
Yeah.
All right, so, so that's, I'm not trying, there's, that's what I had to say on it, I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you, I know, I know, Councilman Beatrice wants to, go ahead.
So, just for the record, a couple of minutes ago, I was all for this, now I got a few questions. So if my mother passes away and leaves me her house, and I don't want to, nobody's going to live in it. I cut the grass, it's a vacant house, but there's no codes violation from the outside of the house. Does this do anything to that?
I have an answer for that.
Huh?
I have an answer for that.
You have an answer?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so what, what would it do?
I think the purpose of all codes officers and all that, when they go around the city and the neighbors and everything, they respond to complaints.
Okay.
And when you have a piece of property that you own, and you don't know what you're going to do with it, it's empty.
Right.
You cut the grass, you keep it maintained, nobody cares.
Okay, but does this?
Nobody cares, it's when you have grass four feet high.
Right, but that's codes, that's codes, I understand that, Judge.
I'm saying to you, most laws don't get attended to because there's no reason to attend to them. I'm saying that people are going to go round, driving around, looking for all this, you don't look for trouble, you handle trouble when it comes. So if you have nothing, so there's nothing to handle. As far as the definition, I agree with the president that, you know, definitions and what they are actually come out of court cases, really, they tell you what the definition is. So you use a broad brush, and maybe sometime if you ever have to find out what the actual accepted word is, or definition. I know a lot of things that people call something, I don't agree with, but you know, so, all I'm saying to you, you either have something or nothing. Councilwoman Frank brought this as something. If, if, it's, it's, it's what it is, I'm not going to defend it as being more than what it is. And I'm not going to say that.
So you're not answering?
You know, my, I have a property where the two people next door are so sick, nobody ever sees them. But they cut their grass, somebody comes there, maintains the property, and quite all right with me, nobody's ever going to bother those people. And if the house were, and I know another house in our neighborhood, I know it's vacant because the both cars are dead, but nobody's going to bother them, it's vacant property, but it's private property. So you have to take it in the context in which it's delivered. You don't take it into a context which is not, now, if somebody wants to come and tell us of how they do something and how they pay for it, or tell, not me, it tells you, fine, I don't, you know, we're, we're in no big hurry, are we now here? We're glad, we're open to suggestions, and, you know, we always learn from other people. That's all I'm saying, I'm not defending it, or asking to pass it, I'm just telling you what I think is before you, that's it.
Okay, but.
What you do, we propose you dispose.
I, I understand that, but my question is, that's codes. What is the difference between the codes and this? So I understand, nobody's going to come by my house, because I got the property meticulous and there's no violations. This vacant registry, what's the difference? Can they come to my house and ask about that? And my second question is, is this going to help us get rid of any zombie properties? So in, in turn, in turn, you're telling me we're going to go there, and after three years, we can find somebody three thousand dollars, I believe it is, I agree with all this, it's good. But basically, if the guy says, go pound salt, I'm not paying, it means nothing. Now, you have your codes, if I call Marcus and say that the house down the street, the grass is two feet high, nobody cut the grass, we go cut the grass, we're charging that guy on his tax, on his taxes, correct, am I correct? I'm asking questions.
It's an abatement, you can do that.
Okay, so what is actually the difference? I don't really under, I mean, I, I like the idea, I want to get rid of the vacant house in my neighborhood, is this going to help that, or no?
Yes, it will help, I, in, may I have the floor?
Wow, are you done?
Well.
You wanted, you wanted to answer the question, go ahead.
Well, I'd like corporation council to answer the que, I mean, either one of you is, I mean, is it going to help? Is this going to make the house across the street from me, then, was the nicest house on the street, it's been vacant for twelve years, now it's a check? Is this going to force the mortgage company to sell that house?
I can't answer that question, but with respect to whether or not your house that is vacant, that is very well maintained, I can't say, I mean, if, if it's vacant, and it meets the definition, and someone wants to bring a complaint, even if it is nice, and someone says it's vacant, it'd be up to us to prosecute it and say whether or not. even if it is nice and someone says it's vacant, it'd be up to us to prosecute it and say whether or not it's vacant or not and prove it. And it's up to the court to make a determination of whether or not it was vacant. Still has to prove it.
And wait, my last question, and then you guys can, so, and then the end of the day, if I don't want to pay the fine, I don't pay the fine and nobody does nothing to me. Am I correct in that? Just, yes or no? Am I correct? Okay, so as much as I want to support it, I think.
Well, I have an opinion on it, but.
A couple of things. One is.
And then Councilperson Williamson.
I really liked what the judge said, this is something and the alternative is nothing. Will it, will it help that, that house that's been vacant for, I don't know, maybe not. On the aggregate, will it help? Yes. On the aggregate, because there are lots of people, I think it's really important to remember that most of the residents in this city follow the law because they believe that the laws should be followed, right? Most people are compliant most of the time. So lots of people are simply going to be compliant because this is the law and they follow the law. So this is going to provide an extra incentive to some people to move a property along that they currently don't have. So this is going, in the aggregate, is it going to solve every single case? No. Are we still going to have vacant properties? Yes. Are we still going to have zombies, which is a particular legal status about who owns it in the, the particular state of ownership? Is it going to solve those problems? No. This is not going to solve all of our problems, but it is going to make the problem a little better. That's what I believe. And I believe it is better to eat away at the problem than to say, "Well, it can't solve all the problems, so we're not going to try it at all." It's, it's a case of letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. It's not perfect, so we're not going to pass it, and even though it might be good, it might do some good. So let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good in this instance.
Right, and just, I want to make one quick comment, then I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Williamson. I think this allows us, if, if you do sign up for the registry, and it does allow us to gain access to that building to see what's in there, what we're up against, you know, how is there violations? I think it gives us access to the building by enforcing them to get on the vacant building registry. That, that's my opinion. I don't know, I'm not an attorney. But go ahead, Mr. Williamson.
So, no, the question I have, you know, it's, I kind of, I kind of agree with everybody, with everybody. It's actually a good conversation, just listen to everybody. My, my concern is, it's almost like a, it's almost like a headline type deal. It's almost like smoking in the park legislation that we did years ago that you can't really enforce, but we have it, we just put it on there just for the headlines, you know, and.
You could still enforce it, though.
I know, but you, you're just not going to have time. And then it comes down to what you're saying, you know, the right to privacy and everything else. I mean, we're putting legislation with no teeth, no nothing, nothing goes along with it. And do we got to hire more people? How many, how many properties do we have in C U? Like 22,500? How many properties do we have in C U to get? And out of those 22,000, how many of those properties are vacant do we know of? Do we, do we know? I don't know. We might only have 10 properties. I don't know, maybe we have a thousand. I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of things, I'm just listening, just, just playing devil's advocate a little bit, that's all I'm doing. And not saying no or yes or anything, but I just think it's just legislation with no teeth and it's just, I just don't think.
Can I just respond to one part of Mr. Williamson's argument?
Hold on, you have a comment.
So my, my concern is like the, the judge says, and like every else has been saying, I mean, how can we actually enforce it? How do we, do we put somebody in charge of this? Do we have another person? I mean, you're talking a lot of work, a lot of properties. And if you really want this to work and really want the work to vacant, then it's just basically, it's just going to sit there. It's just almost like, was that legislation I did a couple of years ago on all the material in the city? Remember we want to do a, what was that thing we did, President Williamson, that? All the property in the city unit. We wanted to do a, not a task.
Still have to rebuild.
No, no, no.
No, he's not talking about the reassessment.
All the engineering, you know, all the property owned and all the stuff that we're supposed to do, it, it never, it never came to realization. So I just, I don't know. And then they got the zombie properties. You went through the zombie properties for like the last six, seven years. I mean, what have they been doing? I don't know. You know, I mean, I never got, heard anything back. We sold one house. I've been hearing about Hammond Ave for the last eight years. I mean, I might got, you know what I mean? I mean, when's enough's enough. So anyways, that's all I leave, that's all I got.
Hammond Ave did sell.
I just, I just, I want to reiterate the point that I think that this is setting the council up for, for people to say, "Well, you know, you said that this was going to be on a vacant registry, but the person hasn't registered their vacant registry, how come? And how come you didn't go after a fine when they said that there's going to be a fine?" So I think, for me personally, without any repercussions to the fine, I know I'll get a phone call saying, "Well, how come the owner's house still looks like this a year later? How come, you know, how come they haven't registered it?" And, and I also think that until you clear up who's collecting those fines and who's actually doing the registry, I think that, that, that's another setup for the, the codes department, the chief building inspector, and whoever's going to be collecting the fines that we can enforce. And I think even proven discovery for the most part. What if somebody challenges this in court? I mean, the, the Corporation Council have zero teeth in court if somebody says, somebody sues the city for having this there without any type of.
Is that true?
All right, thank you. Councilperson Friend, and then Councilperson Ayala.
Oh, oh, okay, I remember what I wanted to say to Councilwoman Williamson. You're right, we don't have an exact list or an exact number. This is, this will give us one tool by which we can start to build a more accurate picture of which buildings are vacant in the city. I, I, it's not going to do it overnight, it's not a magic wand, but it will begin to, to at least begin to build that list. So, that's what I.
Yeah, I think my argument for it is also the, right now, people are supposed to be doing the rental occupancy permits. So it's almost like an incentive to make sure that they are signing up for that. Not everybody who runs out their places actually has a permit to do so, even though we're trying to make it. So if the alternative is, they're going to be deemed as a vacant building, they're not going to want that on their record. They'd probably rather get the occupancy permit, is how I see it. So more data, I think is better with this.
So can I just say, ask one thing, and then that's it?
Are you done?
I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, Congress. So would you consider letting this gentleman come and talk to us and taking our next meeting to see if we can put some more teeth in it? Because I want to support it, but it just doesn't make much sense to me.
I'm not hearing any actual suggestions about the teeth from Corporation Council or our own council. So I don't think, I don't want to, no, because I don't think that we've got the actual. If we can, over time, think about something, we can come back and amend it, if we can think about the teeth question down the road.
Yeah, but what about the gentleman that Mr. Galini talked about, who wants to do this on par with his city?
He thinks this is great. He has read through this legislation and thinks it's great that I'm bringing it. He's never once said to me that he'd like to come and talk to us.
Okay.
All right. President Galini.
All right, so I was, I was going to clarify something, since that was challenged earlier. That's why I requested the floor again. I did send this to Mr. Morovsky, the executive director, when you submitted it. I had quite a long conversation with him about it, and he did say to me when it was, when it came up, that's why I brought this up, this wasn't necessarily on the agenda. Typically, even now, we have a committee of the whole meeting where everything's in the committee of the whole and anything can come up. We still put on the agenda what we are discussing. And even though this was probably almost two months ago, when I spoke to him, he did say, "When it's on the agenda again, let me know, because I would like to come in and talk to the council about it." Now, I'm not disputing the fact that you've spoken to him multiple times and even last week, but the fact remains that I did tell him that when this came up again, I would do that. And it wouldn't necessarily be to speak out against it either. It would be to have him discuss, because he mentioned many things. One of the things he did mention to me specifically was, when they did implement this in his town, they had a property owner who had a shared wall type of building. And it got to the point where the guy kind of kept it up to codes, they kept trying to go after him, but then the wall started to crumble and was actually destroying the building next to it. And they did use their form of this to rein that in and eventually move, as Councilperson Friend was saying, have that property kind of move on to a next owner. I don't know if the guy sold it or whatever. But my concerns from earlier are still my concerns with this. But at the same time, Councilperson Friend brings up a good point, and sometimes the city, it's the city doing this. When properties aren't maintained, they destroy the properties next to them. And those people are keeping their properties up and all that stuff. So I'm not trying to speak out against this, Councilperson Friend, but my point is, Tolga did want to come and talk to the council about this and hear from the council and, and be able to interact with them as, as someone who was involved in implementing something similar and watching it take place. And I'm sure he would like to do that, if, if given the chance. Otherwise, I mean, I really think we should at least rein in what the term vacant is and instead of just applying a yearly fee, potentially fine people if you do establish a registry for not getting on the registry, because this, to me, is a very privacy-based thing. But we have a lot of buildings falling down all over the place, so.
All right.
But Mr. Morovsky would like to come in.
Well, if we, I think we'll keep it in committee. I, I know it needs further discussion, and then maybe we could set up a later date and time.
Yeah, and my point is, I wasn't trying to use him as some kind of Trump character, Councilperson Friend.
Yeah, no problem.
This was already under dispute, but I.
Councilperson Williamson.
Council, Council President Galini, did you have Tolga, you say Tolga, right?
Yeah.
Bring a list in how many properties that he's taken care of in C U, like zombie properties.
Well, if you want to come in and have him talk about that as well, but what he had to say about this was interesting as well. It really was.
I'm just curious how many houses, I'm going to talk about zombie properties since I've been here.
I thought that that's what they were supposed to do.
Well, they do that when they are afforded the ability to from the city, so.
All right. I have a discussion on this legislation. Anybody else, any other question that's in committee, any other legislation? We're going to call this meeting to an end, and we'll probably kick the other one off at 6 o'clock. We got about five, six minutes.
We're starting a little late, please excuse my tardiness. We'd like to start with the CFA grant.
So this is on, I just would like to change the title of this.
You want to change the title of the grant?
It says, the title of this resolution is CFA grant, like all these things are CFA. Can we just change this to Main Street Grant for Midtown Utica Community Center?
So you want to change the title?
Main Street Grant for Midtown Utica Community Center.
Would you like to make that amendment on the floor?
Sure.
Anybody opposed to that amendment? Okay, everybody, any questions with this legislation? Of course, it's applying for a grant.
Can I mention something in support of it?
Absolutely.
They came forward three or four years ago, and we picked which application we were going to allow to go forward rather than letting them both. And we did not pick them, so hopefully we pick them this time.
Thank you for that update, Mr. President. All right, let's get to the next piece of legislation, which would be the, therefore conduct the public, the public hearing for the property for sale on 1226 Weissville Street. This is Councilman Burmaster's district. Mr. Councilman Burmaster, are you okay for calling for the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sir. The following legislation is for the sale, and that would be subject to committee. Our next piece of legislation is legislation number four, calling for the sale of 1226 Weissville Street, again Councilman Burmaster District. Mr. Burmaster, how are you on this property?
Yeah.
You're good with it? All right, this is calling for the public hearing, resolution number four. Resolution number five will go into committee. Next piece of legislation is for 101 Matthews Ave. Councilman Burmaster, you have a few properties being for sale in your district, don't you, sir?
Is that that big building on the corner of Whiteville?
The pavement, the pavement lot. It's across from the big building.
No, we demolished, well, we demolished the big building that was there. Then Pichi on the bigger property across the street has been much smaller, if we were there, then it would have been apartment.
So this is the paving, create a parking for his property. Councilman Burmaster, it is your district, you can hold it, or we can vote on it tonight for a call for public hearing.
We're good.
Thank you, sir. Piece number six will be voted on, and piece number seven will be forwarded to committee. Our next piece of legislation is also for another sale of property, 1102 and 1104 Howard Ave. Councilman Irving.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Number eight will be voted on, and number nine will be subject to committee. All right, number 10, let's hold off the number 10 till the end. We're going to skip number 10 until the end. We do have piece number 11, it offers the, is that number 10 too, or no? Yes. We need to pass the Thursday rule, if my council, if my colleagues are okay with that, from legislation number 10 on. Is there anybody objecting to that? Okay. Thursday rule will be voted on at our next meeting. Piece number 11, sponsored by Councilwoman Celeste Friend, common counsel endorses Baptist Church and CFA funding. Would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, again, and I apologize for this, because this was my title, I would like to change the title of this also to be Historic Preservation Grant for Tabernacle Baptist Church. So this is the third phase in the reconstruction of the steeple at Tabernacle Baptist, everybody can picture that church, it's right behind, I think of it as right behind Swifties, but that's me. So, and we actually have Pastor Deborah Kelsey is here tonight, if anybody has any questions about this grant. So she's successfully applied for and used two grants so far. This is the third phase, which will be the masonry work, is that correct, Debbie?
It's actually the, a little bit of masonry work and continuing work on the roof and whatever on opposite.
Okay. And is this the final stage, then?
We would wish, but probably not.
Okay. It was really nice to see the scaffolding come down, and to see the beautiful steeple, you know, to be able to see it. So, anybody have any questions for Pastor Kelsey?
Not at this time. If my council would like to, we could probably put a full council on this one, if she may be able to speak at our next meeting for her three minutes, if she would like to.
This does need to pass tonight, because this is CFA, and the CFA deadline is the end of July.
Counselperson Mule, did you mean like the meeting at seven?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, let's get to...
So I'm going to amend the title on the floor.
Yes, you will. Number 12, endorsing Masonic Home Practor Arts Institute, very good. Councilwoman Aiello, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, this is also the CFA funding, and they're looking to get artist housing, so, artist residency housing, so we could put this forward.
If my colleagues wouldn't mind, this would be a great for a full endorsement, if Katie Aiello would allow it.
Is this a matching, is this a matching one?
This one's not a matching.
Because it one says matching, the other one, we just don't want to get stuck giving up.
I don't think this one's a matching one. They said they'd be here later tonight to answer questions as well.
I think Main Street is always a match, Main Street is always a matching, I believe.
I'll look it up, they emailed me.
I don't have number 12 in the house.
Funding contribution on government, donation of other grants.
Well, the other one has matching.
Of the time, approved endorsement of the government and municipal, other projects being located. Approved, endorsed Main Street grant for assistant private residential. Hers did not say anything about matching funds. Number 12 did not say anything about matching funds. Which one are you, which one are you referring to, Councilman Williams? This is matching funds?
Well, I think the one we just did earlier for, at matching, or the MU, right? The MUC?
Or did it's...
They have a matching $125,000. This one, and the one in Tabernacle, has no matching either, so I mean, do you got to have matching on these?
No.
It has to be on there?
It's the grant after the grant, all we're doing is giving them the ability to apply for a grant that the municipality is saying okay to apply for. The matching, there's no matching funds in any of these pieces of legislation.
Not city funds, not, the city is not the EFC, not any of these three.
Exactly. All right, so it's on them, if they don't have, if there's a funding, they have to come up with it on them.
Absolutely.
If they don't have it, then it's okay. All right.
Okay, Miss, Councilman Williamson is okay?
Yep.
Any other questions, sir?
That's it.
All right. One other sidebar, we do have a local law for amending our taxable dates for the Assessor Review Board. It is a local law sitting on a table for over seven days. Are there any questions on this? I'd like to see if we can pass this tonight. Very good. And our last piece of legislation that we'd like to discuss is resolution number 10, authorizing installment purchase agreement for the purchase of various items of equipment, software, and digital software services for our Borough of Police, the Utica Police Department. I'd like to, which officer would like to start the conversation with Deputy Chief Noonan? Would you like to, Noonan, would you like to start this conversation, sir?
Start the conversation.
Okay, why don't you give us a summary and why you're doing this, and we'll open the table for questions after.
This is Captain Brian Banzner, he's in charge of our support division, which is the overseer. One of his responsibilities is purchasing the equipment. I think everyone knows that back in 2015, we were one of the first agencies in state to implement body worn cameras for our officers. At the time, we did a lot of research, embedding, and we went with a camera called, a camera company called V-View. They've been good for us, but as technology, technology changes, and there's a cost to that. In addition to that, V-View was bought out by a bigger company, who's essentially kind of taken over markets providing on cameras called TASER. Recently, they declared an end of life to V-View, which means there's no longer service, the online service for the cameras, essentially they become obsolete. That being said, we began to research what would be a good new camera system for us, and after looking at different options, we came to the decision that TASER is the best camera on the market. All the agencies in the area use TASER, actually, state police just want the TASER, it's basically the camera that's used statewide. In addition to that, with new, with police reform, and changes in discovery, these cameras will make it much easier for our officers to upload all the required discovery to the district attorney's office, thereby, you know, not to spend more time on the street. It has several safety features for the officers, so in addition to holding them accountable, it also helps better keep them safe. You know, with transparency and safety, there's a cost, unfortunately, and this is just a necessity we have to have for, to continue to be transparent and keep up with police reform and do everything we need to do to stay progressive.
I'll start, Deputy Chief. The item's broken down, does anybody have a list? I know you emailed to us, does anybody have a list of those items broken down?
Yeah.
Okay, can you just give it to one of my colleagues, and we'll pass them around? I'd like to open the table for questions, I'd like to start with Councilwoman Williamson.
So in addition to the cameras, they're, they really have, they know they're doing this company, so they produce, also produce LPRs, license plate readers, and also interview interrogation camera systems, so that's, and TASER, the actual TASER, and that's all part of this package, to stay current in all those, all that.
So actually, it was initialized by the person who doing business now with the cameras is actually going out of business, or bought out, or they were bought out?
TASER now owns V-View, and they're discontinuing V-View.
Well, the transition should be smooth between one camera system to the other.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start opening up the table for questions. Mark Williamson, you're first, sir.
So, and, that's, I mean, it's great that we're doing this, now in the court of law, since we have the old equipment, Stephanie, we have the old equipment, in the court of law, would that go against us if we have, if we don't pass this to make sure our police have the best of the best? In the court of law, something goes wrong, we have outdated material, it's foggy, it's raining, whatever the case, man, would that hurt us?
I mean, I'm not going to be the one handling it, it'd be the DA's office, but I'm sure that it would have probably some negative effects.
I concur with this, I mean, you got to get everything you need, so.
I mean, over the next year, we won't have, they're not going to replace, repair, or support any of our cameras.
Exactly, so it's a no brainer, if you got to do this. Okay, all right.
Councilman Frankie DeBrangio.
Yeah, first of all, was there an RFP on this? Is there any other companies? I mean, you're asking us to commit, what, five million to this? One million of ARPA, and then four million that we're going to have to make payments over 10 years. I know you said, when you're dealing with computer equipment, they do become obsolete even after a couple of years. How is this, this company going to commit for full 10 years to upkeep it, upgrade it, and all this good stuff that comes with it? The other thing is, I noticed a lot of, you wanted to buy maybe 145 licenses or something like that. Is that for each person to have an individual body camera?
Yeah, so we're going to, it's called a cloud system frame, and with that, each officer has to have a license for, for the cloud system to download the video onto the cloud.
Right, but we couldn't, I don't know how many have on duty each, each shift, let's just say there's 30 members on A, 30 members on B, 30 members on C, just for numbers. You couldn't just have 30 available that are, that they're carrying, 30 on charge, and when the next shift comes in, they pick them up, they put them on, and then you recharge, you can't...
I know what you're saying, they're, they're officers specific.
They have to be licensed to each individual person. You can't share.
We, we, it's the same questions during the whole, this whole process.
Yeah.
And they replace everything, if something goes, it's replaced for a reason, you say that?
I mean, built into the price, but...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Just to announce, so I, I think, so you said, yeah, I believe this is the sole source provider, because of, because of what they provide, they qualify as the sole source provider, because everything they do doesn't run RFP.
Yeah, and it's unsourced well, which is a similar state address. Could you say that again, Heather, louder? I didn't hear it. It's unsourced well, which you as council will approve sometime.
Wait a minute, Joey. Frankie DeBrangio, you all set?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Katie, you have to go.
Yeah, so, well, you answered part of it, you said it was cloud-based, but is there also like a hard storage for these?
No, this is...
Just all cloud?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Joey.
Yeah, so, this is probably Peter Heather, so you guys all know I'm always for the police, the fire, support, everything you guys have, well, I'm curious here, so I, I just heard Councilman DeBrangio say, we're going to come up with four million, we're going to have a million dollars out of it. So, obviously, it sounds great, it's, it sounds, everybody's up for it, we're not going That's if we don't find revenues next year covered. That, that's if, that's if we don't find other expenditures to cut. I, I know what you're saying.
Well, it's just, I just know, it's just sitting here for a little while now. I know when it comes from upstairs and we wanna do it, it's easy. But when it's not somebody's idea, we find every reason in the world that we can't spend $300,000 or $400,000. And believe me, I want these guys to have the best of everything, along with the fire. Okay? I want them to have, and along with the DPW. So, I'm not fighting you. I'm just kinda curious how it comes through, you know?
Oh, Councilman Allen, can I?
Absolutely.
So, this wasn't in the memo. And I was gonna do a memo. I didn't know, I found out the mayor felt strongly, like, they consider passing this when I, or I would've done a memo, that actually it's explained process and the finances of it, because it wasn't, you weren't prepped on that. This has been going on for probably four or five months. This is something the administration stepped into lightly. The chief surprised the mayor some time ago that we needed to do something different, that they were gonna discontinue the product, just like we found out a year ago, they were gonna discontinue the party ticket module that they were using. And we've now tied it into the munis system here. But we had to go out and pay for that, which was quite a bit of money. We found the money, we had to do it, we had to continue issuing party tickets. So, the police department has, has been researching this, making sure the, the representatives from the company, Exxon, came in several times. When I received what the costs were, I was led to believe it would be somewhere around $2 million. When the mayor took a look at this, he saw additional modules that he felt strongly should be worth. We, we are gonna have a difficult time with discovery. We are, we're having a difficult time right now with discovery. We have probably three individuals that spend most of their day on inquiries from the public for information about discovery related issues. So, when it came to me, when I became aware of it, I wanted to know the product, if there's extended warranties, you know, why do you have to have this type of TASER? There is a, a component of it that we'll be dealing with virtual reality, because that's what's coming upon us. So, so, when this came to me, and I, you know, I sat with the mayor, I sat with the captain to go through, you know, the financing, can we pull it apart? Can we take this out? Can we take that out? It was deemed that we couldn't. So, it was either this package, or we'll try to go, there really isn't much out there to get. And it's compatible with the state police. The county has already done it. I actually reached out to the sheriff about this. Did they do anything interesting or different with the financing? They are actually voting on it. They, they had a five-year, they got a five-year renewal. They're voting on it in July, the county alleges. But, the really big point here is, it wasn't until such time, is that I made an inquiry into the law department, that we found out that we had to come to you. It wasn't an installment sale. I thought it had an inkling it would be, when it's an installment sale, it's considered similar to a borrowing, not quite a borrowing, but similar to a borrowing. And, you know, I advised the mayor that this needed to be done. So, I think we were surprised about it, that it had to come to the council. Doesn't mean it shouldn't come to the council. And, and that's basically the history of it. I'm not a professional in TASERS or body armor or training, training modules. But they, there was a lot of time spent. And with the compatibility, police officers moving in and out of jobs, that they can use the same type of software seemed, seemed a winner. And I started with the cost, of course, we all are, right? But, the problem is, we're now under different rules and regs, and we have to meet them. We have to protect our police officers. And so, that's why we're here tonight.
Can we use, instead of using $1 million in ARPA money, is there any way we can use more money of ARPA money, even less to the taxpayers? If we have this money, I mean, this is an important thing. I wanna see our officers on the streets with the best equipment they can have. And, and no doubt, but I don't wanna see our taxpayers take run of it when we have all this money covered. That's, just asking a question.
I would definitely talk with the mayor about that. I, I know that, and I actually spoke to councilperson Testa, I wanna say back from the budget time, and she said, when are you coming back to us? You've allocated all this ARPA money, what, you know, when are you gonna be able to get the projects done? And I committed, we committed, the administration committed to coming down here and giving a presentation to show, once again, outline all the projects and where we are. Because I can tell you, you know, we are struggling a little bit with, with, with being able to implement some of it. Not our fault, not our fault. But we're doing everything that we can. But there are a couple of projects that may be in question, not because of any other reason that the, the applicants have perhaps changed their mind, or they felt the budget isn't gonna work for them. So, i- is there some opportunities? There, there may be, but I can't say that for sure tonight. That is the mayor's, under the mayor's purview, he's proposing a proposal, we're not gonna allow him. So, that, that's one thing I can't, you know, I committed to the councilperson, and I will commit to you, and, and actually Marcus and I have talked about it on several occasions, coming down here in the near future and doing a presentation where we are in all the projects.
So, last, there's a question. Joey, you all set?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess some of my concerns are similar to Mr. Beatrice's about, this is a lot of money. And I guess I'm also kind of surprised that it would surprise you that you would need to come to the council. I mean, at the very least, this would involve an E and A transfer of more than $15,000. So, how could you ever spend $5 million, whether through an installment plan or a bond, without coming to the council?
All very, so.
Be careful.
I don't have to be careful, because I'm gonna explain to you, how it's gonna finance. So, this is presented, we presented, there are different types of, different types of pieces for different places. We also, I just mentioned to you that we were looking to put $1 million in ARPA, we would've covered the first year's payment. So, so, that's what we're working with, that would require us to come here and then require us to do that. Okay? So, this, this has evolved over the past week, 10 days, because I was trying to price it. I looked at the warranty costs, and I asked the same question, I was interested about licenses. Captain Banzner has been working on it with me, because the, the number is high. It was not what I expected. My first thought about all this, it was, you know, maybe $1 million. That's why only $1 million was set aside. But we are at the end of our useful life, or what the police department uses, and we don't have many options.
And can I assume that, that Corporation Council has poured over this contract such that the total amount can't change over the next 10 years? That they can't come back to us and say, I mean, it's, in essence, because it's an installment plan, it's like an interest-free loan, in essence. What prevents them from coming back and saying, oh, yeah, costs of producing these cameras, these specialty metals have just increased, so actually this is gonna be another 15% higher than you think? What? I mean, can I just assume that this contract has been really carefully studied, and $5 million over 10 years isn't gonna turn into $8.5 million over 10 years?
I would assume it's been reviewed by my office, and I'm sure that it has. I wasn't the one reviewing it, so I can't answer any questions about the contract itself, but I'm sure it has been reviewed thoroughly.
I guess I'd like to hear from somebody who has reviewed that contract, and is gonna assure us that this 5, 5.1 isn't, over 10 years, is not going to turn into something else over 10 years. This is a lot of money for our constituents to have to pay for. This is a, on this one thing, is more than a 1% tax increase. And we all know that there are other things that we also think, everybody has their own thing that they think we oughta be spending more money on.
I'll set the floor. Samantha, you have the floor.
I just wanna say, for clarification purposes, that we did hit $400,000 to keep those four firemen if needed. So, I mean, we're using it for, for equipment, but not for personnel purposes. With that said, a couple of things that I, I have here. Number one, you have a contract that's being settled by the police department. We have a contract that's being settled by the fire department. I think before we even try and allocate any funding towards our budget, that we need to figure that out. And I would appreciate, before the council votes on any of this, that we double check those projects for that ARPA funding, because there was a couple of ones that were drawn on a paper napkin at the time that we, you know, allocated those funds for that project. And I really think that instead of hurting the taxpayer, we need to exhaust all avenues through that ARPA funding first. So, I mean, that, that to me, and I know that you said that you would give me those numbers, I think that that's the most important part before, you know, we really tackle this budget, knowing that these contracts are hopefully gonna be settled by the end of the year, to, to see where we would be for next year's budget, especially to this amount. But I, I, I think that the police department needs this equipment. I mean, in the long run, it's gonna help us, obviously, especially with discovery, everything that you explained. Obviously, $5 million is a lot, and you would like to see that go towards personnel. But unfortunately, we're in a time that we have to cover our butts more than, more than what we're used to. So, with that said, I would hope that you come to us with some of those projects, that I think that we could possibly chop down a little, and then, you know, figure out where we are with those contracts before we, before we touch the budget next year.
I'll set.
And when's the, and one last question, Frank, I'm sorry. When is the first payment gonna be due? Was it at August the 22nd, the $76,000? Or is it the $400,000?
Yeah, that's what it says, I don't think I still recall. And that's, we were gonna upfront part of it with ARPA, so that we can have a less strict impact.
ARPA's first. Next year's budget, it gets ahead.
So, it won't, it won't affect next year's budget?
Two more years after.
It won't? This ain't.
Alright, hold on, Joey.
But, can I just respond to that, Councilman? The goal was to not have a effect on the current year's budget, but the balance of the ARPA funds would be used to, to reduce the large amount, so that then you divide by 10. So, it was never, it was never the goal to just put something off until Mayor Palmeri's term ends. That's, that's not the goal.
Well, you gotta use those fundings for ARPA with, with, no matter what, by the time, by the end of next year, so. And I, and I still have the floor. So, but they've gotta be allocated and, and be spent by the end of 2023, correct?
No.
24.
24? The end of what? The beginning of?
They're obligated by the end of 2024. That might, 26.
Okay, alright, so then we have plenty of time to go through that. And I think that that's gonna be our best, our best avenue. Because I think that we could use those funds towards, towards equipment. And that's, those are, the, the whole point of that funding coming through was, was for relief of police, fire, so on and so forth.
The majority, the majority of the funding has been allocated, the projects are starting. There's a couple announcements coming in the next couple of weeks. And so, things are moving, moving every year.
And, and that's not, that's not to say that it's not.
But there is, there is one project that.
But we're, but when we're helping out private entities, such as the Obelston, with $2 million in ARPA funding, and then we're burdening the taxpayers with, not that that building wasn't a burden, but I'm just saying, we're burdening the taxpayers with, you know, a possible $5 million reduction, taking away firemen, and doing so on, you know, things like that. We're not taking care of the responsibilities that we have financially for the city first, before, before those things. And that's just my personal opinion, you don't have to answer that.
But especially, have you not done something with the Obelston?
I wish they would've knocked it down, but, I mean, that's, that's, yeah, I wish it would've burned, you know? Yeah. Yeah, but not, not to the $202 million, I think anyways, but that's it. We would've, we should've let it burn to the ground.
I'll set Samantha.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you have the floor.
Thank you. Couple things, just putting there. Something councilperson Friends said did pique my interest, and you were kinda looking up when this happened as well. If this contract, purchase these things, if this goes forward, does have a hardware component, which it does, a hardware component. So, you've got your cloud services, your software, your firmware, et cetera, the hardware, all that different stuff. And it is over a period of time, we should make sure there is a master purchase agreement. Because I'm assuming there is a discount on the hardware, which we should ensure is extended to other per, you know, if you need to buy, say, 10 more units, two years from now, if we add to that, we should see if there's a master purchase agreement where we will be guaranteed that discount throughout the lifetime of this particular hardware. It would, obviously, they come out with a new unit two years from now, and there's a new version, and, and there's new different hardware, we wouldn't be extended there. But on the existing hardware that we're setting ourselves up here.
So, the, the part of the contract is in, I'm not sure how many years we get, all the new versions, we, we get, including this cost.
And the discount?
At the discount, it's all factored into this cost.
Okay, so there is a master purchase agreement for the five-year lifetime of this.
So, whatever new version come out in, in, in.
Two or three years.
Two or three years.
Okay.
We get the upgrade.
Alright. And my next question, actually, is the first one.
That's across the board to the TASERS and.
Okay, so it's the hardware and the software. Alright. The next question, real quick, is this gonna help with all the new discovery stuff that was just passed? I'm assuming the answer's yes.
That's a huge part of it.
Okay, because that's.
And, and, we're, I think everyone here, I know everyone here is on board with police reform.
Right.
Police reform is, and, and we're, we're a proponent of it, but it's essentially unfunded, unfunded maintenance by the state.
Yes.
And we have to do this regardless. I mean, we have to have body worn cameras. So, there's a cost.
Well, and that's, and that's, well, that's kinda my last ques, so that's kinda my last question, is, as much as it's, the cost is a hard pill to swallow. You mentioned compliance, you mentioned compliance. The current equipment is aged out and is not going to be supported any longer?
Correct. No, and within, within a year.
Okay, so within a year, you will not be able to operate in compliance with New York State law?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanna know.
I'll set, Mike?
Yeah.
Joey, you have the floor.
Yes, one last question here. So, our next meeting, so regardless, we have $1 million toward this, put aside for ARPA, so we're good to get these guys going by August 1st, correct? Correct, right? So, is it fair to ask you, if we put this in committee tonight, and at our next meeting, you just bring us, show us if you can do anything, or anything like that, or change anything? Maybe show us the plans, what you were talking about for the ARPA, and then we vote on it that night? I don't, and if it was something that was a mandatory vote tonight, that it would hurt them from getting the equipment, I think I would feel different about it. But as long as we're already going forward with the $1 million for the first year, can we, can we wait? Are you okay with that, if we put this in committee until the next meeting and vote on it then?
The mayor's concern was that price would go up.
Well, that's, that's not what I'm saying.
I know, I know, I'm just telling you what the mayor's concern was, and that's why.
Well, the mayor is that concerned, because TASER put a deadline on this, on this price.
Okay, well, we're, we're going along.
What, the deadline that they gave us?
Uh, last week.
Wow, talking about concern.
We've, we've been working with the sales rep, and he's, he's, he's extended this for us, but I, I don't know.
Then $5 million will go someplace else. I mean, come on. It's not wanting to be just dropping it ahead and ask for it in six, within six days.
Well, you guys are already saying you got the first year's payment. I mean, you're gonna make the agreement with it, one way or another, I think everybody on this.
Yeah, but once you commit, you're committed for 10 years. You can't just stop.
Okay, but I think everybody here is, wants.
You need to do it.
We need to do it, but I wanna see it, I wanna see us try to do it a little bit less for the head.
You need to see where we are with ARPA funding, plain and simple.
You know what I'm saying? And they're already saying the first year is gonna cover, she adds $1 million out of five. So I don't understand that, you know, I mean, I don't think there's anyone sitting on this around this council is not gonna support the suggestion. I just think we want to see a little bit of breakdown differently on Monday.
Joey, you all set?
Yeah.
Just one, one other.
Councilman DeBrenge.
The budget director. I just, if everything stays at its, and it's 1 million and we have to supplement to 4 million, um, do you feel that we can handle these payments at 400,000 dollars a year? I mean, beginning in August?
Yeah.
Without really hurting two months, you anticipate more tax revenue? What, how do we stand with that right now?
Sales tax is, is a bowler was last year, which is startling to me. I, I would've thought it would move down. If you did have a down run, a down payment a couple of weeks ago, then it back up again. So, um, you know, with, with, with the hospital coming on, with NEXUS coming on, you know, we're understanding right now that NEXUS is fully booked from the end of October, beginning of November through March. Every weekend is booked, you will not be able to run tissue device. What does that mean? They're all gonna be staying in North Utica at our hotels and eating at our restaurants every weekend. Um, that's good news for us, that's good news for our sales tax. Um, as it relates to, you know, what next year looks like the year after, we have to take the other two things into consideration, right? The PDA and the fire department, the new contracts. Um, hopefully we'll have some news about that in the very near future, like in the next couple of weeks. Um, you know, I, there, there was some accruals made for past years from the fire department. Um, don't know where that's gonna end up. Um, but, you know, sales tax is remaining steady for the most part. And, you know, we were up, I, I want to say, I can't remember if it was 2 million or 3 million versus what the budget of last year. And that's what's gonna, that's what we have carried last year through. So, um, I do expect it to stay the same, we're not seeing any, any dip. I do expect retirement bills to be up a little bit, right? Just because they're based in the stock market, they have a buyer soon, but I expect, I do expect that to be up a little bit. Um, we won't know that number, we'll have an estimate through the middle of August. Um, you know, our, our workers' comp is fine, but it's not fine, but it's not increasing. You know, it's, it's really about those union contracts, not just those two. You know, we've got CSEA, we have settled with CSEA, we have settled with DPDW. Um, and so I don't foresee anything else happening. But I will tell you one thing I do want to add, we initially thought we could borrow for this. And I work with bond counsel, and as I mentioned to you before, we don't actually borrow for a project like, you know, like Hannah Park. We didn't borrow for Hannah Park, we borrowed for what they call a useful life, what is the life of that project? And that's actually in state law. And there is nothing in state law that's a useful life to a camera for a police officer or a taser or cloud storage. So we, we're not able to borrow for it, because I would prefer, have preferred to do that before a lease like this. We do only equipment after 10 years, uh, but as the deputy chief mentioned, um, every two or three years, they're gonna be trading out the cameras and the tasers.
Yeah, so it's like, it's actually, so year one, obviously you get new cameras, year, year two and a half, year five, year seven and a half, year 10 is all new equipment.
Why couldn't they do a lease purchase of that?
All right, hold on, hold on. Heather, you all set?
Yeah, she just asked me. I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead, you want to finish that question?
You don't want to say it?
I guess.
I can ask it? Okay. I said, what about lease purchase agreements?
Literally, that's what this is. This is what, as I was mentioning to the other councilperson, this is what they call a capital lease. All that means is an operating lease, an operating lease is when you have a copy machine, they come in and they trade it out each year, you don't get to keep it. At the end of the capital lease, you get to own everything. And that's literally what this is. I know that poor councilwoman has stolen that sale line, but theoretically it's just like a lease.
Do we want a lease then?
Capital lease, you can't borrow money.
No, I know, but like, there's no like, you know, reoccurring payment, I mean, kind of like we did with the vehicles? Like, you're gonna have to get new ones in 10 years. Why would you want to own something that's not gonna be culpable in 10 years?
Cause at the end of the day.
Why not just keep it on a renewal that we are budgeting for it?
The real value isn't today, cause I took a look at the cost of the tasers. It's not the equipment. It's, it's the technology to, or the platform, or the.
But we did just buy, we did just buy the body cameras, not even three, what is it, four years ago, three years ago? I mean, we're already got a, so what are we doing with those?
2015, they're giving us a minimal trade-in for.
There's no grants.
All right, hold on Frankie, hold on, hold on. Samantha, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that leads right into my question. Okay, so 10 years, we're making, we're spending 500,000 a year for the next 10 years, but at the body cameras, we trade them in as we need to?
They, they, they trade them out, so it's, it's built in. A year, year two and a half, new cameras, year five, new cameras, year seven and a half, new cameras, year 10, new cameras.
And at year 10, then we need, we are gonna need to.
Reevaluate.
I mean, I know none of us are gonna be here in 10 years, but, but many of our, but many of us will still be paying taxes in the city in 10 years. So it seems like this is a perpetual motion machine, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on.
But, so I just want, like, the cameras, these cameras don't.
Call the report?
These, yeah, I think that's right, Mr. Williamson, I do actually. I mean, yeah, a city is a perpetual motion machine. Um, these cameras themselves don't last, just the, in the normal course of things, they don't last for more than, what, two, three years?
Yeah, I mean, between the tech, technology and wear and tear, yeah.
Wear and tear and being used.
Technology's updating, it's timeframe, and then the wear and tear. But the wear and tear, as part of this, they're all warranted, they're replaced.
Right, but, but in any case, most of the cost isn't actually this hardware, most of the cost is the platform.
Platform and storage, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Katie?
Yeah, actually, technical question on the storage. I think, uh, okay, we get the recordings, it's on the cloud, how long do you have to access that? How, will we be able to go back for 10 years once we get into this, or?
For this, I believe it's unlimited. Yeah, it's unlimited.
Awesome, thanks.
There's a server somewhere in San Francisco Bay that has all our information, that has a lot of information.
What is their customer support service like? Is it 24/7 if something goes wrong with it, or?
Yeah, I'd imagine so.
And then last question, is if we hire more over 10 years of police, can you just buy like, a set of three of these at a time if you need to to? Or, is that like part of the contract at this, is like a locked-in price?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question.
No, thank you.
All set?
So, quick follow-up to that then, who owns the data? Do we own it, or do they own it?
Oh, they do.
Ooh, they own the data. Can they do with it as they please?
No.
What's the, what's the, what's the legal contract under which?
I would, I would assume it's like most other servers, um, there's certain agreements that are signed, disclosures, things of that nature that protect the, um, information that's being stored on the servers. Um, so while they own it, I mean, it's not, you know, they're maintaining it, but it's not a, you know.
It's proprietary to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Frankie DeBrenge?
Yeah, just a quick question, I know, I don't know what we're doing now, is there any manpower that we're using with the equipment we have now that maybe we could pull from? You know, I don't know if there's a couple guys sitting up in the computer room or whatever they're doing. Will this save us on manpower and maybe we could put them on the street or something?
It saves on manpower in the sense that it saves on time, Councilman? I mean, so, so the time that's spent downloading, um, it's kind of hard to split, but so the announcer has to go through and, and, uh, so for specific use of course, instead of they have, it's called tagging it, tag it, this all does this automatically. So it's gonna save us manpower in the sense that it's less time spending, uh, identifying video, downloading video, sending it to the DA's office. This, this kind of is all inclusive.
This will do it all for you in, in a timely manner, okay?
Lot, lot faster.
All set, Councilman? Councilman Vermaes?
So, so what you're saying, because we're, we're already behind in the contract, if this doesn't pass tonight, that next week the price might be 15% higher.
So just to be clear, you guys are voting on the approval, the financing component of it? So that's the, the important, but yes, I mean, according to.
We were provided with a deadline for, for price guarantee.
Okay.
All set?
I just want to roll the dice and have it go up and have it be on me. That's my opinion, thanks.
Councilman Williamson, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, the way I'm just listening to everybody, I, I just think we just need to move this forward because it's unf, like you said, un, un financial mandates, I mean, we're not getting any funding from this, and we gotta protect our police. And what happens if a perpetrator breaks the camera? Do we go after the state to pay that, or how, how do we do that? I mean, I mean, you know what I mean? I'm just curious.
No, we, so we, we charge them and, and there's, there are potential courts, but they, uh, they restitution, yeah.
All right, so there is, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, bottom line, I mean, I mean, we have to do this, bottom line.
They have a piece of damage law by, by people in custody and, and court, we charge them accordingly, and then the court hasn't paid back um, where the cost of damage is looking for, same way you apply for the case.
So we're gonna have to do this a bit, I mean, it was, I mean, like you said, with the ARPA money, I mean, I think we should move this forward and let, you know, let Sand do her thing with the ARPA thing, you know?
How about you give us, what did you have it, we had it last week?
Hold on, Samantha, hold on.
Uh, yeah.
Hold on, Katie, you have the floor?
Oh, yeah, no, I was just trying to do the math, so it's 5 million over 10 years, is where we're going with this.
No, there's, uh, no ARPA. Uh, this is a question, I guess I was going down that road that Katie just, that Katie just started. Um, the legislation says 5.1, this, this in front of us. Um, is it possible we can negotiate with the mayor to get a little bit more ARPA so we're not looking at such a high tax increase later on? The reason why, I know we don't have to do this now, we can, we can, we can, all of, all of us can negotiate, get more ARPA money from the mayor so we can lower the possible tax increase. If there's no room in our budget, I hate to go and start crashing the police department budget to make up for this. So, um, is it possible that we can, after this, negotiate with the mayor for a little bit more ARPA money so we can cut any potential tax increase in the future? Does this, does this lock us in?
An extra 4 million?
The 5.1 is really about the whole number, not so much about how we make payments.
Well, it's not breaking it down.
Right.
So that's the problem I do have with it.
Let, let Katie finish her point.
No, yeah, I was just kind of going off, well, of the value of 5 million dollars. So then that's divided by 10 years, 500,000 a year for cameras, 149 cameras?
400,000.
For, okay, well, I'm talking about the value of this, I guess, but yeah, we can do, but even so, then you take, it's about 3,500 a year per officer for cameras. It's like $9.50 a day, and I don't know, when you break it down that way, I, I see the value of this either way. I don't, technology-wise, I think it's a decent price, but obviously.
So, if there's a possibility we can negotiate something with the mayor and get a little bit more ARPA money contributed towards this? This is not locking us in, correct?
I think for those projects that, and there aren't that many that, that aren't, no. I'll give you a great example, I was down here, what, three or four months ago, because there was some money that wasn't going to be utilized for a technical program, and ended up re-appropriating that for the state swans for gang site, right? There are a couple of those opportunities, um, but the majority of the money, the projects have already been started for the design of the projects have been started. But I can, I can go back to him, I mean, he knew when we spoke to you yesterday that we'd have this concern. So, um, you know, I think he would be very, he'd be open if we could just find the right project that's going to move forward and move toward the way that it was supposed to.
Understood, okay. Any other, Frankie DeBrenge?
Do you anticipate any of the loans coming off the books that we borrowed a few years ago, or is there anything coming off?
One of the things that we've tried to do the past couple of years, and we've been successful, I mean, with your help, we've been successful, is leveling, leveling the debt, right? So that the debt doesn't go up dramatically, come down dramatically. Cause that's, that is a big case that spikes, right, spikes the budget. Um, what's coming off, in all honesty, I mean, that will be up to you next year. When we go for a capital program, if you say, well, we're gonna borrow 2 million for paving, that's it. We're not gonna buy police cars, we're not gonna do anything else, um, then debt would be coming off. We normally pay off 5 to 6 million, 5 million a year debt. So if you borrow, you borrow what you're paying off, you're, then you're gonna stay, for the most part, pretty stable, okay? Those are some nice, kind of verbiage, but, you know, so if you decide next year that you don't want to borrow, you're just gonna borrow for paving, then yes, it will go.
So you have to go back in a referendum, once again, but where you stood at. All set? Okay, any other questions for this piece of legislation?
That's true.
All right, council members will adjourn for five minutes and, uh, we'll start the meeting hopefully around 7 o'clock. Thank you. Seven oh seven. I'm going to call this meeting of the City of Utica Common Council to order. Clerk, please call the rule.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, Klassimo Testa, DeBrango, Galimi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening will be the minutes of the previous meeting.
May I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please, Mr. President?
We have a second from DeBrango. Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been accepted, the reading has been disposed. All right. The minutes have been posted on E code three sixty for anyone to review, public or servant. All right, we have no public hearing this evening, there's no property, so the public hearing is now closed. Public comment period. We have two speakers signed up this evening. The first, Debbie Kelsey, if you could please come forward. The Common Council has provided you a copy of section three, two, four, four, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name and you may begin. Thank you.
I'm Debbie Kelsey, happen to be the neighbor of President Galin. Good to see you. He has a wonderful new dog. If you've not met his pug, you should meet the pug. Um, I'm one of the pastors of Tabernacle Baptist Church here on Hopper and King and Clark Place in Utica. As Councilman Friend mentioned earlier, we have been very fortunate to have two rounds of funding through New York State Environmental Protection Fund. We've completed Phase One, which was the tower project, restoration of the tower. We're almost to the end of Phase Two, and that involved doing the steep roof on the sanctuary portion of the building and repointing the masonry. If you happen by that way, you knew we had a lot of stones that were falling off the building. And thanks to your support, as well as that of others, we were able to get the grant, and we're almost done with Phase Two, which has been, ended up to be more than a one point one million dollar investment in downtown Utica. And now we're preparing to do a grant request for five hundred thousand dollars for Phase Three of restoration of the building. And we would use that for ongoing, other pieces of roofing that we've not just addressed. We're not certain yet whether we're going to do the slate roof at the very back of the nineteen oh one portion of the building, or whether we're going to do the two flat roofs on the sides, side aisles of the sanctuary. I lived in Italy for five years, so I'm sorry, I have trouble with the hand motions. But, um, we really appreciate your support. Our building was constructed, the sanctuary part in eighteen sixty seven, and the older part, the newer part is from nineteen oh five, so it's quite costly to maintain it and to get it restored to the proper situation. The good news is we have a thriving congregation. We're ninety-eight percent Corin now, ethnic Corin. Our moderator, Ken Somoe, is here, and one of our members, Kapru. And we thank you for your service to the city, and especially those of you who are sitting at the middle table who keep us safe and come check when the fire alarm goes off. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. All right, the second speaker this evening, Edward. The Common Council has provided you a copy of section three, two, four, four, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Edward Ford. Uh, it's just been brought to my attention about the property, One Oh One Matthews Ave. And I've been interested in that property now for about ten, twelve years, but during that time I had some major problems health-wise. Now, that property is being sold by the person across the street from me. The property is adjacent to me. And I've been trying to get that property now for, like I said, ten something years. It's been sold. Now, I understand that it's going to be a parking lot. I wanted to use that property for an extension to my property, grass-wise, and it's on my side again, adjacent to me. Now, it's been brought to my attention that maybe, just possibly, it can be divided. It's a eighty feet piece of property, and of course, forty feet is a lot of distance. Now, if we have to, I don't want to, but if we have to, split it up, I'd be on adjacent to my side still, and I guess he can have it across the street. Because he's across the street from the property, and it's on my side of the street, where, like I said, for twelve years, I've been trying to get that property. But again, I had medical problems. So now, I got the cash for all this that I didn't use ten, twelve years ago to get this property. Now there's somebody here, I've been there since nineteen ninety-five, and it's been good, quiet, up until two thousand twelve, thirteen. Noisy as heck. I'm talking about up the street from me, going south, down the street, north, cross the street. Motorcycle noise, everything, and I don't even want to be that loud. So if it's possible, like I keep saying, I don't mind splitting it, but I would like to have a piece of that property. That's all.
Thank you. There are no more people signed up for Public Comment Period this evening. We have no guests this evening. We do have a communication from the mayor, which I will read into the record. July sixth, twenty twenty-two, Mayor's Message to the Common Council. This is in the mayor's words. "I want to recognize and thank Vince Scalise and Ray Durso for the outstanding job they did organizing and coordinating this year's memorial and Independence Day parades as all the events were successful. The Utica Metro SWAT team finished first in a week-long tactical challenge event organized by the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. The Utica Metro SWAT team is comprised of the Utica Police Department, New Hartford Police Department, and the Oneida County Sheriff's Office, with the City of Utica Police Department serving as the commanding agency. Yesterday, the administration announced the formal creation and membership of the city's first civilian public safety advisory board. This board was one of the recommendations outlined in the Police Reform Committee's report. Board membership consists of individuals appointed by the administration, the Common Council, local nonprofit organizations, and the Utica, Oneida County Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP. The board's first meeting will be Thursday, July twenty-eighth, at three P M. at City Hall. The City of Utica Youth Bureau is hosting and coordinating a family-friendly summer party Monday, July eleventh, from eleven A M. to four P M. at Hannah Park. The event will consist of local D Js, face painting, food trucks, and a bounce house, and feature a magic show by illusionist Leon Etienne. Tomorrow, the administration will announce the reauthorization of funds to continue operations of the drop-in centers at the Salvation Army and Rescue Mission. This has been a successful program in helping combat homelessness. The announcement will be taking place at the Salvation Army Headquarters, fourteen Clint Place, at two P M. All members of the council are welcome to join. The Utica Zoo will be hosting a ceremony to commemorate its new visitor welcome center. This project is able to come to fruition due to funding through the Utica Prosperity Initiative. Jenny C Street, from Riscany Boulevard to Court Street, will be paved beginning Thursday, July fourteenth, at six P M. until Friday, July fifteenth, at six A M. To reduce the traffic impact, the paving operations will resume on Friday, July fifteenth, at six P M., and run until Saturday, July sixteenth, at six A M. The schedule is contingent on weather and subject to change. During the hours of paving operations, there will be no northbound traffic and only one lane of southbound travel. Any updates or changes to the scheduled paving plan will be shared as it is learned." That concludes the mayor's message. Reports of the city officers. Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
U P D?
I just want to acknowledge all the officers that worked the July fourth event, the parade, the fireworks. Very impactful, great, great. Both events went very well. The fireworks were very well attended, and there was not one incident. So I want to thank the officers and the public for helping when that went down. Just got to throw a friendly jab back at Mr. Vincent. Last meeting, he suggested that we monitor the big lots, plaza for traffic violations. We rolled eighteen tickets, stopped twenty-eight cars, and I'm just curious how many of the state police... So we'll continue to monitor that, uh, traffic intersection.
All right, thank you. Department of Urban and Economic Development? All right, U F D? Thank you very much. Budget Director? Codes?
Two things to report. I'll be sure. Um, one is, so, um, because you guys passed it in the budget, thank you. Um, I was able to fill two of my vacancies in codes. Um, I have more codes officers now than we've had in a long time, and they're coming to certification at the end of this month. So we're going to have to rethink somewhat where we put them, how we do our districts, where, where our problems are, and, and a lot of, what we're doing that is based on the housing, um, survey that we paid for, the housing study that we paid for and got done. So if any of you guys want to talk to me about how many codes officers you'll have in their district, what their responsibilities will be, and sort of how the department is going to move a little differently going forward, I offer that conversation, because I want you guys to understand, um, what we're doing. The second thing is green waste. I get thirty calls a day about green waste, and I just want to say it in a public meeting, okay? You can no longer put green waste at the curb. If there is green waste at your curb, then you probably already got a notice from codes, or you will be getting a notice from codes. When the D P W. and garbage trucks go around, they assist us in telling us all the piles that have not been cited that, that, that are out there. After you get a notice, we do what's called an abatement, and we charge you for picking up the green waste. If you don't pay it, it goes on your taxes. They pick it up on your garbage night when the trucks go around. So you get a two hundred and fifty dollar bill, three hundred dollar bill for green waste pickup, and then people come in and, well, I didn't know, it wasn't mine, my neighbor put it there. That's a law that was passed in the City of Utica, and that's how we enforce it, and if your constituents have questions, you can direct them to me. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes the reports of the city officers. Uh, we have no cash or miscellaneous reports this evening. So we're going to move on to petitions, remotes versus appeals. First District, Councilmember Kedee Ayello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tomorrow night, six P M., everyone is invited. It will be the second skate park meeting. The first one was a little over two months ago, very well attended, and from there, they did a survey, also had a lot of great responses. And tomorrow, what we will be seeing is the design proposals for both T R Proctor Skate Park and the Lincoln, um, Jason Waterman Skate Park. And last round of feedback, so if you want to weigh in or say, or just want to get, be excited about the project, there will also be pizza, thanks to some donors, so. Uh, yeah, that's tomorrow, six P M. at the Parkway Rec Center.
Thank you very much. You good? All right, Second District, Councilmember Bob Burmaster, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things. I do want to say, um, because it was brought up in earlier discussion, so on June seventh, the Mohawk Valley Greater Land Bank did sell eleven twenty-eight Hammond Ave, so that is now in private hands. Um, and we sold it for a good price, and, um, the land bank has done the city a real service by rehabbing that building and then selling it, so that's great. I want to, I went last night to the school board, had their annual organizational meeting, and I want to congratulate, uh, James Paul and Tenille Newp for being sworn in as new school board members, and I want to congratulate Joe Hobika and Danielle Padula for being sworn in as the new president and vice president, respectively. So I wish them all, uh, great luck, and, um, the Fourth of July parade was great. Um, it's, it's probably on my, uh, top five list of things I love about being elected officials. I get to march in parades and wave at people. It's very, it's really fun. So happy Fourth, everybody. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader and Fourth Word Councilperson Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to add to our codes officers, um, warning about the green waste. Please, if you have time, uh, those of us who have it by the curb, please containerize it as soon as possible. Again, uh, we don't want you to get fined. It's, it's the law, and, uh, I think the merry-go-round people enough leeway to, uh, get it containerized, um, in enough time. Secondly, those of us who are still thinking it's Fourth of July, our police department will be enforcing, um, and pro- Secondly, those of us who are still thinking it's Fourth of July, our police department will be enforcing and prohibiting any use of fireworks within the city limits. And please restrain yourself from using any more fireworks. The Fourth of July is over with. Assuming everybody had a good time, everybody had a safe time with their family. I know I sure did, and happy Fourth of July, as my colleague said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fifth District.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Dennis Irvin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I was talking about the race against racism that we had on Juneteenth. It went off, went out of hits. The youth base, I saw one of the fastest little kids I've ever seen run a quarter mile. Councilwoman Friend and I stood there and watched this kid beat everybody by at least two blocks. So he must have been in some good training. Secondly, July 4, I really enjoyed the cornhill fireworks up until about 1 o'clock in the morning. And they were coming from all directions. And it wasn't that bad. Robert Myers from Johnson Park Center actually sat out there on the corner and watched them with me. She's usually calling the cops, but they were very enjoyable. The police had a lot of restraint with people and didn't arrest anybody, which was a good thing. And that's about all I got.
Sixth District, Councilmember Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Minority Leader and Council Large, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have nothing to pass.
All right, Council Large, Samantha Glossmo Testa.
I know everybody's already said it before, but I do have to thank the police department and the fire department for the job that they do on Fourth of July. I live on one of those streets that gets blocked off, and it's an actual nightmare sometimes, but everything went really good, so I do have to thank them, and we're gonna just do it again next year, same thing. Thank you.
All right. Council Large and President Protop, Frank DeRango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's the first time that no one mentioned this. I had to go through eight members, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about Borlomaker Weekend coming up. You know, we have to showcase our city and make sure that we are, we are ready. I know the area's been cleaned up. I know the mayor had a sweep today. He went backwards, I guess. Nine-mile sweep. That was probably the longest sweep they had. I'm sure all the city employees were happy about that. And so we just enjoy the weekend. It's a great event. Hopefully it'll be a nice, safe event. If anybody gets a chance to get out and watch the runners and go down to the brewery, it's a very special place this time of year, so I just wanted to mention that. And I know the police department, fire department will be in full force, enforcing everything and making sure the streets are blocked off and trying to keep everyone safe, so. That's another detail that you gotta look forward to, but hopefully it'll go without a glitch. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you very much. So the only thing I had tonight was good luck to the runners. So you beat me to that one. It's all right. It's all right. No, I hope everything goes well this weekend. We'll have a ton of people in, so let's show them how awesome Utica can be, and have a good time Sunday. All right, so let's see what we got. Do we want to start from Resolution Number 1? I believe, it says CFA grant on it right now. What do we want to read it into the record as?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the title, please.
All right.
President, I'd like to change it to Main Street Grant for Midtown Utica Community Center. Main Street said that a motion to amend the title.
All right, do we have a second? We have a second from Miola. Any opposed to that amendment to Resolution Number 1 that was discussed in caucus? Okay.
If permit, Mr. President, can you make this full council?
All right, we have a motion for full council. Second. DeRango's the second. Any opposed? It's full council. All right, I'm gonna read this into the record. Do we have a motion to move this? It's actually sponsored by Councilmembers Miola and Williamson, so we'll just need a motion from the floor. Miola's the motion, Friend is the second. Whereas the Midtown Utica Community Center is applying for the New York State Homes and Community Renewal, New York Main Street funding through the 2022 Consolidated Funding Application. That's what CFA stands for. Whereas, the NYMS program was created to provide resources to assist New York's communities with Main Street and downtown revitalization efforts, et cetera. Whereas the Midtown Utica Community Center project is requesting up to $500,000 in funding from NYMS, with the required $125,000 match being provided by private funds. And whereas a formal resolution supporting MUCs, 2022 CFA is required for the proposed NYMS program, now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the Midtown Utica Community Center Incorporated under the 2022 CFA. Your votes.
90's adopted.
Proposed Resolution Number 2 is calling for a public hearing on a portion of 1226 Whitesboro Street. It is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster. Do you want to remain the motion to move that, Councilman? We have a second from Miola. Okay. This is calling for a public hearing on August 3, 2022, at 7:00 PM for the sale of a portion of 1226 Whitesboro Street says from, that's odd, to Eddie C. Soriano for a sum of $250. This is the public hearing. Your votes.
90's adopted.
Okay, the public hearing will be held. We have a parred ordinance number 3 for the sale of a portion of 1226 Whitesboro Street to Eddie C. Soriano. Is there a motion to places in committee? We have a motion from Councilman, or Councilperson Testa. Second from Beatrice. Any opposed to this going into committee? All right, it's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number 4 is... Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm just making sure everything's fine. All right, calling for a public hearing, August 3, 7:00 PM. A portion of 1226 Whitesboro Street from Urban Renewal Agency to George Waters for a sum of $250 to create additional parking. This is the public hearing. Is there a motion? All right, second from Miola. Your votes on the public hearing.
90's adopted.
All right. The next proposed ordinance, number 5, is for the sale of the same 1226 Whitesboro Street to George Waters from URA for a sum of $250.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Second from Burmaster. Any opposed? It's in committee. The next resolution is calling for a public hearing for the sale of 101 Matthews Ave to Vincent Holdings LLC from the URA for a sum of $5,000. It's a public hearing on August 3, 7:00 PM. Motion for Burmaster, second from Miola. Your votes.
90's adopted.
Ordinance number 7 is for the sale of 101 Matthews Avenue to Vincent Holdings for the same sum. Public hearing will be held.
Motion to refer to committee, Mr. President.
Second from Councilperson Friend. Any opposed? It's in committee. The next resolution is for the sale of, it's for the public hearing on the sale of 1102 and 1104 Howard Avenue to David Gilio for a sum of $1,500. Again, August 3, 7:00 PM. We have a motion from Councilmember Irvin, second from Miola. Your votes. Councilman Friend.
90's adopted.
Ordinance number 9 is for the sale of 1102 and 1104 Howard Avenue for $1,500.
Motion to commit, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion to commit. We have a second from Burmaster. Any opposed? It's in committee. That ends the properties. The next piece we have in the packet is a resolution authorizing installment purchase agreement for the purchase of various items of equipment, software, and digital storage services for the Bureau of Police.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the Thursday rule for this and all subsequent legislation, please.
Okay, we have a second from Miola. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? All right, it's waived. Would anyone like to move this piece?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Our Budget Director raised your hand. She would like to speak for this legislative...
Oh, I didn't see you there. Okay. You want to speak on behalf of this? Yeah, you're fine. Yeah, yeah.
There were a couple of questions that were posed, and I left the room, I just told the company. So number one, as it relates to the data, the data is ours. It is ours. It will always stay with us. If at year 10, we choose to go into a different direction, we can either rent storage from them, or they'll give us the data and we'll put it somewhere else. So it is our data. Number two, as it relates to the Councilperson's question, as it relates to licenses, we'll be able to buy additional licenses for the price that's listed on the contract, unless there's some huge escalation, either some unbelievable technology...
So just a note, that's what I was referring to when we were discussing a master purchase agreement, when you're buying subscription services. Okay.
Number three, the Council would answer the question about 24/7 customer service. They will, it's out of Arizona, takes 13 seconds for a body to give up the phone, but we will have 24-hour, seven-days-a-week service. And then the last point, and I don't remember who brought this up, it was about escalation within the contract. There is no escalation within it, and we'll kind of, we're a lot of important to take another quick peek at it to make sure that there's any language, but I was assured by the company that is why the prices are there. They've actually, to some extent, built in what they think can increase to build their time, so that's why it's going to be higher than normal. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to move Resolution Number 10, authorizing the police department for the software and equipment purchase.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. So unless there's any other preceding motions, this is on the floor for a vote. I'm gonna read this into the record, summary, it's been reviewed in detail in caucus. You have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention one thing here. So we're gonna commit to the $5 million, you know, the $1 million and paying $400,000 a year. We don't want to wait and maybe put it in committee and let the Budget Director see if we can get more funding from ARPA before we actually commit to the $4 million. I don't think, we're gonna meet on August 3. I think if we can get a little better deal for the taxpayers, I think we should have it in committee. I'm gonna support it either way, but I would just like to get maybe more ARPA funding towards the total cost, just to save the taxpayers a little bit. If we have to go down that road in the future, I don't know how we're gonna stand financially at the end of our fiscal year or anything like. So that's my suggestion, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
You can have the floor, every councilperson.
Very briefly, I still didn't get a breakdown, I mean, in writing of, I mean, I just don't understand. We have no problem passing $5 million in any authorization of funding, while we just took away four firefighters out of our budget last week. I mean, this is the most mind-boggling council I've ever encountered in my entire life. With that said, I don't know how I could support this without those actual facts and figures in front of me. I mean, at least from a memo from you, that that's how it's being split up, a million from ARPA funding and $4 million from, you know, the city budget that, you know, we haven't allocated for, what line item that's coming out of. I mean, any breakdown whatsoever of any of that, I mean, we haven't gotten yet. I mean, how financially responsible could you be? And I have no problem calling a special meeting tomorrow, or next week, or something like that, if we had to pass it, just to have those figures in front of us. It's just, I would never feel comfortable supporting ordinance without those in front of me.
Let's hear from the rest of the council, and let if you'd like to address in general, Budget Director, okay? Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm gonna direct this to Heather. I am under the impression still that even if this is supported tonight, that you are gonna try to get us different funding. Am I correct in that? Okay, so you're gonna do your best for the taxpayers and for all of us here. We support this because the police need this stuff immediately, and it's a time-sensitive contract, but you will try to get back to us and do your best, right?
Yes, tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything before I hand the floor to the Budget Director to answer the questions that were posed? Okay.
What I'm looking at, beyond speaking with the mayor first thing in the morning on the hard-won funds, is that I have a memo to you by close of business, tomorrow's Thursday, by close of business on Friday, that outlines how I believe it should be structured financing-wise. Because as to the Councilman's question, it's not just about next year's budget or the third year's budget. It's about making sure that we have a, we don't have spikes in our budget. That's where we... The past 20 years, we've got spikes and things go way down and things go way up, and we really work very hard at trying to just level it all out. So I will commit to you, I'll have a memo, she may close the business on Friday.
Take that, Father.
Yeah, you may have the floor.
Yeah, I'm supporting this, why? Because... I'm supporting this because it's, they're unfunded mandates by the state. We have no choice, but we have to do this. End of story. I don't care where the money comes from, we gotta pay for it. End of story. It's unfunded mandates. That's how I see it, and there's no way around it. So if you don't like unfunded mandates, vote to go over it out.
All right. Anyone else? Your votes.
90's adopted.
If I hear anybody complain about it in firemen, the next...
All right, all right, all right. Proposed Resolution Number 11 is sponsored by Councilmember Friend.
Just for clarification purposes, there is no dollar amount for this application, and usually when we pass funding, grant applications, we add the dollar amount in there. I had heard your neighbor talk when she was talking.
Yes.
Couldn't remember her first name, that they were applying for a $500,000 grant?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, the set dollar amount is $500,000? Okay, so can I make an amendment that we put, that the grant application is for $500,000 in that, please?
Miss Kel, Mrs. Kelsey, sorry. Is it up to $500,000?
The maximum is $500,000 we would be applying for.
Okay.
Okay.
So they'll put up to $500,000, that's right?
Well, that'll cover it. I just wanted to make sure it didn't lock them in.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so there's a motion to amend. Let's see where we...
We could just add it to the end of the whereas. Just add the cost of the project, the cost of the grant application is $500,000.
So...
Which whereas?
So the first whereas...
Just as long as the funding amounts in there.
We could put it...
You could put it at the end, be it for the result...
We can put it before the "and." It'll say for up to $500,000.
Requesting up to $500,000.
Yeah, requesting, yeah. Okay, so do you want to read the final amendment in, and then we can have a second?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend that says "and requesting funding for up to $500,000."
Is there a second? Okay, Friend is the second. Any opposed to the amendment?
Full council.
Okay, yeah. Does everyone want to go full council?
Let's go full council. I'd also like to make an amendment. I want to change the title.
Okay, hang on one second. Any opposed to the amendment made by Councilperson Testa? Okay, it's amended.
So now I'd like to make a motion to change the title to Historic Preservation Grant for Tabernacle Baptist Church.
Second amendment, Mr. President.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, it's amended.
Comfortable?
I will read the "now therefore be it resolved," which is the important part. "Now therefore be it resolved by this Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the application of Tabernacle Baptist Church for a grant under Title IX of the EPA of 1993 for a historic preservation project known as Phase III Masonry Roof Water Runoff Roofing and located within this community." Your votes. I read it as is, so.
90's adopted.
All right, Resolution Number 12, resolution approving and endorsing Munson Williams Proctor Arts Institute in its application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal for funding under the New York Main Street Program. It's sponsored by Councilmember Aiolo. Is there a second? Okay, Miola's the second. I'll just summarize this quickly.
I just, okay, 400 permits.
You good?
Yep.
All right, whereas Munson Williams Proctor Arts Institute, their desire is to apply for $405,000 in financial assistance through the 2022 CFA under New York Main Street Program, whereas the grant application requires that the applicant obtain the approval and endorsement of the governing body of the municipality in which the project will be located. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of Utica, New York approves and endorses the 2022 New York Main Street Grant Application for assistance prepared and to be submitted by Munson Williams Proctor Arts Institute. Your votes.
90's adopted.
Okay, that's the end of all the resolutions and ordinances. Do we have a motion to take from the table or something?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to move the local law amending Section 5.022 of the City of Utica Charter to change the taxable status date for the City of Utica from August 1st to March 1st.
All right. Okay, we got a second from Councilperson Friend to take that from the table. Any opposed? Taking that from the table. Okay, it's on the floor for a vote. I'm going to read it in its final form, if you'd like us to. Right, it's local law, let's go for it. Being enacted by the Common Council of City of Utica, Section 1. Section 5 dot 022 of the Utica City Charter is hereby amended to read as follows. 5 dot 022, Preparation Review of Assessment Roles. In the manner provided in the Real Property Tax Law and other general laws of the state relative to the listing, valuation, and assessment of property for purposes of taxation, the assessor shall proceed to make correct review, complete, verify the assessment roles for the city. The taxable status of real property in the city shall be determined annually as of March 1st. The annual assessment of property in the city for the succeeding fiscal year shall be made by the assessor by March 1st, and the tentative assessment roles shall be completed on or before May 1st. The assessor shall cause the notice of the completion of the tentative assessment role to be published as required by law. The notice shall be, the notice shall specify the 4th Tuesday in May is the date on which the Board of Assessment and Review shall meet to hear complaints in relation to the assessments. Such days shall be known as grievance day. Upon the day so designated, the Board of Assessment and Review shall meet and act in conformity with the notice. Upon completion and verification of the final assessment role, it shall be filed on or before July 1st with the city clerk, there to remain 10 days for public inspection. A separate assessment role shall be made for each ward prepared as prescribed by Real Property Tax Law, except that it shall contain a column for the insertion of the city tax. Upon levy of the city tax by the common council, the assessor shall make one copy of each of the roles containing the city tax and deliver the same to the city treasurer. Section 2, the local law shall become effective for March 1st, 2023. Your votes.
Nine nays adopted.
Thank you.
Motion to close, Mr. President.
Yeah, I have a quick, I have a quick question about the local law we just passed. I don't know if this is the same thing you were going to bring up, Councilperson Friend.
Nope, she's looking to get something on the committee.
Oh, okay. So we've got in here a city treasurer. Should we amend that? And reconsider it with, because we don't have treasurer anymore. Remove that from the city charter. It should be the controller, right?
A treasurer and controller should be the same title.
What's that?
I don't have that in front of me. It's all right, we just ban things now, we don't know what we're doing.
Well, I mean, in all seriousness, it's been operating as is, and we just amended the dates. That's what that was for. But in all seriousness, there's 100 other places unfortunately it says treasurer all over the code.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to define it, you can say treasurer slash title, slash controller.
Can we just amend the charter to say controller slash treasurer rather than re?
Well, this is a local law. I think we're good? All right, we're moving on. We're all set. Councilperson Friend, you have the floor before we adjourn.
I'd like to remove from committee proposed ordinance number three. This is the Article 8 vacant building registry.
Okay. There's a motion to remove that from, dispense or, oh no, pull from committee.
Pull from committee.
I was very surprised. I thought you said dispense.
I didn't.
Okay.
I wouldn't.
Is there a second to pull that from committee? We have a second from Councilperson Aiello. On the board, the votes to remove the vacant building registry from committee. This is to remove it from committee. This is not passing it, it's to get it to the floor for discussion. All right, it's on the floor for discussion.
So first of all, I'd like to make a very small amendment. If you go to Section 2 dash 6 dash 405, biannual reports, I would like it to read Mayor, comma, Chief of the Fire Department, comma, and Common Council.
Hey, because I was just making sure the clerks had it up to no...
So what I want to do is just add Chief of Fire Department after Mayor. So that we will also send the biannual reports to three bodies rather than two. That's my one amendment. I would like to say that I know that this is, that people have many legitimate concerns. I think the concerns...
Is this, well, so hang on, is this commentary on the amendment?
No.
All right, so let's move, let's finish the amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? Councilperson Aiello seconded the amendment. Any opposed to the amendment? Councilperson Testa, I'm calling for a, just a, is any opposed to the amendment?
Can you clear the board?
I oppose the whole legislation.
All right, so...
I oppose every amendment, yes.
Okay, so one nay. Is anyone else opposed to the amendment to the legislation? Okay, so the amendment passed eight votes. The one nay is Councilperson Testa. All right, you have the floor again for commentary. Councilperson Friend.
Where are we at? We passed, we passed the amendment?
Yeah, the amendment's been made, yes.
Okay, so I just want to say, I, you know, I think people have legitimate concerns tonight. I don't think the perfect should be the enemy of the good. I think we should move forward. I think that in six months or so, I'd really like it if the Commissioner of Codes would come before us and tell us how it's going. And perhaps at that point, we might think about how we want to tweak in order to improve it. I'd rather improve a good piece of legislation than, than not pass a good piece of legislation because it's not perfect. So I think that this will help to move the needle a little bit on the vacant buildings in our neighborhoods, which are a great distress to their surrounding responsible property owners. So I guess that's all I have to say in favor of it.
Okay.
Did we figure out who's collecting the money?
Well, so, hang on. Right now, what can happen is, you can have preceding motions, clear the board, please. You can have preceding motions which could place this back in committee, or this is going to be brought to a vote. There's also, there also could be motions to amend, et cetera. Just to state what could possibly happen right now, because this was just pulled from committees. Does everyone understand that fact right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, what was your question?
What, who's collecting the money?
All right, I don't believe, is there an answer to that on the floor right now? City officers? All right, so we're going to leave that unanswered.
Okay, second question. Can we go after these people that don't pay?
I can answer that.
Sure.
City court.
Oh, the judge said no earlier, so...
You said, we can't take them to city court if they violate a local law?
If you have money, you, and everything's actionable. Everything is actionable. You can reduce any, you know, you're sending to a judgment if you have an action, and then you have to litigate.
Right.
Once you litigate it, if there's a judgment, it goes on the property, it's an attachment, just like...
Well, it's, it's in the city court though, right? So it's, so, so city court would levy the penalty, not the City of Utica?
There's no penalty. You just either pay the money or you don't pay the money.
Right. So I can give them a ticket, then it's up to the court to decide.
No, you cannot give them a ticket on this legislation. There is no, there is no repercussions to that. That's, that's the whole, that was the whole argument, which I wish the legislation would have stayed in committee because we might have been able to find something.
All right, so I'm going to stop the conversation right now.
So you cannot, you cannot go after them if they do not pay this.
Councilperson Testa.
I've got the floor though. I'm trying to explain to them.
No, I'm taking the floor back because what I want to state is a clarification, because I listened to the conversation earlier and I just want to summarize this, okay? The city would have to file suit against somebody who is not paying the fees. You wouldn't be able to give them a ticket because it's not a codes violation to not pay the fee for the actual building registry, correct?
There's nothing in the local law that states that. There's no repercussions.
I'm just summarizing what was answered earlier.
But that's not true. That's inaccurate.
I'm asking Corporation Counsel.
Yes, I believe Judge is right. You can, and as I mentioned, you have to prove that it's a vacant building, that it indeed is vacant to get the fee.
You'd have to get through discovery, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct. It's not so much as...
Okay, so, so what was explained to me, and I just want to say, so people know, because I've had several meetings on this legislation, and, and so everybody's clear. We understand what we have to do to prove a property is vacant, okay? What I was confused about, and I think they cleared it up to me, is I guess with our findings, then what we do is turn it over to Corporation Counsel and let them prosecute civilly, as opposed to us issuing the ticket. So I know how to prove a house is vacant based on this legislation.
It doesn't state the repercussions though, in the legislation, that that's what, that's the process that you have to go through in order to do it.
We're not reopening this for discussion right now. We had the discussion earlier at length. If you have any other questions, you can make a motion to commit. You can cast your vote.
No, we're just passing legislation without...
I understand, I understand the point of proving.
It's the point of proving, and it's the whole legislation.
Anyone else?
Can I quote by my vote?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So when I came here tonight, I read this, talked to Councilperson Friend at the parade. I was all set to vote on this legislation until I listened to the Corporation Counsel, I listened to the judge talk, and I talked to Marcus. I requested President Goleimi had his gentleman come to talk to us to get more information on it, which I don't know why we couldn't have did that.
I'm not, I'm not cutting you off here, just for clarification. The person I'm talking about is the executive director of the board that Councilperson Friend has been appointed to sit on by the council.
Basically, right now, here's the problem I have with this, why I'm not going to vote for it. Because it basically does nothing, okay? We have a problem with codes. Codes takes care of it. We can't find the guy if he doesn't pay. It's basically, we're placing legislation to say we're doing something that, it's a great idea. I just wish we had more teeth in it to make it go. So that's the only reason I'm saying that, and I'm sorry I'm not supporting it. I, I think it's a great idea. I just don't like where we're going with it. I just, to me, it does nothing. Thank you.
All right. And whether this gets recommitted or voted on, I did want to say one final thing about why I thought it was fruitful to request that once we heard this, Tolga Morovsky did come in and talk about it. This is my personal feeling on this. I think that this type of legislation, while it may do some good, may put other people who are law-abiding citizens in a position where they have to now defend themselves with their own money in court when they may be found to not be doing anything. That's why I was trying to specify that my feelings were that the definition of vacant was too broad and may actually, you know, tread into a situation where you're, you're invading someone's privacy just to figure out if they're in compliance with a city law that is truly meant to make sure that buildings are compliant and not hurting the other properties around them. I think that any law that's passed like that, that goes in the books before it's properly reined in, while it may do some good, will ultimately put a lot of good people in a situation where they have to defend themselves and that money never gets recuperated. So, moving on.
Can I have the floor?
Yeah, you may hit the floor one more time.
I just want to address on this question of whether we did or should have invited Tolga Morovsky. I've communicated with Tolga this evening. He says, well, no, that's why he suggested Sam Wells to us. That's why we have, you know, multiple meetings with Sam Wells from Albany because Tolga's view was Sam Wells knew far more than he did about how this kind of law would operate. So Tolga would have been happy to come had we invited him. We didn't because he suggested that instead we rely upon Sam Wells from Albany, and we did.
And just as a point of order to how we now run the committee system, I had a conversation with somebody about this legislation. They said, when it's on the agenda at a committee meeting, please call me so they can attend. We pulled it out in a committee meeting, which is perfectly fine, but we no longer have agendas that actually announce what we're going to do. That's why I made that point earlier. Thank you. Your votes.
I'd like to call for a vote.
It's back, is there a motion with your?
Yes.
Thank you. I can go back to my vacation.